Okay, we're going to reconvene our special planning meeting to review our zoning code. We'll start off with the roll call.
All right, Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Westman?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
And Chairperson Welch?
Here. And now we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight this meeting is cable cast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99 and is being recorded for future viewing. Meetings can also be viewed from the city's website at www.cityofcapitola.org. Tonight, our technician is Alex Seidey. And as a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. And to those of us in those people in the audience, if you choose to get up and speak tonight, we're going to ask you to just give us your name and sign in. Okay, with that, we'll start off with oral communications. Any additions or deletions to the agenda?
We have no additions or deletions to the agenda. We did have a handout that we left at your table before the meeting.
And it's just a print-off of Attachment 3 to include, there were some of the languages cut off, so just so you have the full language for each box.
Great, thank you. This time we'll open for public comments, and this portion of public comments is an opportunity for to give you three minutes to speak on those items that are not on tonight's agenda of the zoning code. So do we have anybody that would like to address the planning commission? Seeing none, then we'll move on. Commission comments.
No, I'm sorry, no. Silence is good. I did them all last week.
It's been a day or two since we saw each other, so how about staff comments?
Staff has no comments.
Great. So with that, I guess we'll move into our, the public portion, the public hearing on the zoning code update, and we'll start with the staff report.
Thank you, Chairman Welch. Good evening, planning commissioners. I thought we'd start tonight talking a little bit, give you an update on our coastal issues.
Thank you.
As you know, our zoning code is a part of the city's certified local coastal program. It's the implementation plan. There's also the land use plan. And just to give you an idea, the land use plan's kind of like the city's general plan, and the implementation plan sort of serves like our zoning ordinance. So any revisions or amendments to our zoning code does require Coastal Commission certification and LCP amendments. When we get all done with the city, as Katie's told you many times, we'll need to submit to the Coastal Commission for certification. We expect that process to take about nine or 18 months. Our standard review time is six months, but they often don't get completed their amendments on a typical project. This one's going to have a lot much, or a lot more meat to it, so we expect it will take quite a bit longer. So staff has provided Coastal Commission staff with advanced copies of the draft zoning code before we even put it out to the public to let them see what we're thinking, try and encourage some early feedback. They've slowly been giving us some responses as they get to various chapters. To date, we have got some feedback on the coastal chapter, visitor-serving chapter, geologic hazards, and the environmentally sensitive habitat chapters. Tonight, I'm going to give you some of the issues that we think are a bit concerning and where we may need some policy direction in the future. But before I talk about the gloom and doom, I do want to emphasize that we're still talking to them, negotiating with them, so it doesn't mean that at the end of the day, they're going to require some of these things, but they're at least been their request so far. One of the issues that we do have is the Coastal Commission has to find that our implementation plan, the zoning code, would be consistent with our LCP land use plan. Our land use plan is very old. I think it was adopted in the late 80s. It has a lot of outdated information, which you might expect. From staff's perspective, there would be nothing really significantly inconsistent with our zoning code, but we haven't got a consistency analysis performed yet by Coastal Commission staff. If they were to look at it and find it was inconsistent, they could flat-out just reject certification of the zoning code update until we updated our LCP. So that is one risk that we'll have in this process. Probably the biggest issue that we're facing right now is the geologic hazard setbacks. This isn't really a surprise. I think we've all been a little concerned that we may have our current 50-year setback requirement from bluffs to be increased to 100 years. That was the initial request from Coastal Commission. They backpedaled a little bit and said maybe we could live with a 75-year setback. But that new setback would account for worst-case sea level rise scenarios, not what we think will happen, but sort of a worst-case scenario. And it also has to take into account that, or assume that there's no seawalls. Even the existing seawalls and sea protection devices are in place today. We'd have to do that analysis pretending that they weren't there. The new setbacks, in addition to bluff retreat, which we currently have, would also apply to beach erosion, tsunamis, and coastal flooding. That would all be new. And it would apply to new development, any remodels over 50% of the structure and accessory structures. And the remodel would include cumulative minor remodels over the lifetime of a project. So some of our concerns is that the new setbacks could effectively prevent development in the Village, Riverview Terrace, and within 100 to 200 feet along Depot Hill and Cliff Drive. Staff also has concerns with the resource demands of starting to track every building permit and calculate the value of each one to determine when that 50% threshold is reached to tell a property, or they're all done, no more remodels or repairs on their homes. Coastal Commission staff in our meetings has indicated that they're willing to work with the city to ensure that it doesn't become a building moratorium in Capitola. The draft regulations they provided us, I don't see how that works. I think it needs to be dialed back significantly without, to allow us to continue to develop. So we have a lot of work to do in that regard. We're not alone in this issue. The counties of Santa Cruz and Marin are currently negotiating with Coastal Commission on these exact same standards, and they're pushing back as well. I talked to the planning director with Santa Cruz County. They are proposing sort of a two-tier system where you would have what the Coastal Commission wants in rural areas, where it wouldn't be impacting areas of existing development. And then in your urban areas, they would have, you know, standards similar to what we have today. That's what they're going to propose. We'll have to wait and see, you know, if the Coastal Commission's receptive. There is one exception that I think, you know, if we go down this road, that I would suggest the City of Solana Beach wrote into their LCP land use plan, an exception which allows single-family residential development on any property which could not comply with the setback requirements. So you at least get some minimal development rights with your property. They don't have anything for commercial uses, so theoretically, this wouldn't help out our businesses in the village, but at least if you had a home in the setback area, you continue to repair it. To give you an idea of the areas, we had a sea level rise study done in 2012. This shows the potential shoreline erosion that we could realize by the year 2100. So these areas, you see crosshatched theoretically, if these new standards would become undevelopable. Similarly, in that same sea level rise study, we evaluated the future flood zones in 2100. It estimated that we would see an increase of 4.5 feet of flood elevation in the Village and along SoCal Creek. Currently, it's about an eight-foot flood elevation, so then we'd be going to about a 12 and 1/2-foot flood elevation. The other implication is, right now, we have to elevate our residential uses above that flood zone. With these standards, it would almost make it impossible to have a second-story residential unit in the Village. Looking at, and this is, these are real rough work I did just to kind of illustrate the area of Depot Hill that could be affected if the setback for bluff retreat were put into place. The area shaded in yellow could effectively become undevelopable, and you can only do remodels till you hit that 50% threshold. The other issue that we've, that we've had from some of the comments from Coastal Commission staff is environmental hazards evaluations. These are related to geologic hazards. That any project that's within 100 feet of a future geologic hazard area would need to have an initial site assessment by staff to determine if they need additional study. If they did, they would have to hire an engineer, a geologist, to prepare a environmental hazards report to evaluate all potential hazards, tsunamis, flooding, erosion, bluff retreat, over a 75 to 100-year timeframe, again, accounting for sea level rise without any seawalls or revampments. Projects that are located near a bluff retreat zone over 175 to 100-year timeframe would also have to prepare a supplementary environmental hazards report and include a removal and restoration plan that would be effectuated with a deed restriction. So when your property becomes hazardous, you have to remove your structure and restore the property. Our concern, of course, is this additional study analysis would significantly add to the time and cost to process applications and have big effects on our customers. Coastal permit exclusions is something we have currently in our code. However, Coastal Commission staff does not believe the city ever sent those changes to them for certification. I've done some reviews of our files. I haven't found anything yet. That's not to say they're not there, but they don't believe we currently have the ability to exclude development, and they've told us that the zoning code update would not be the appropriate process to add those in. The upshot is, we rarely use them. At least since I've been here in the previous few years. Before then, they're rarely used. And the Coastal Commission staff has offered a new waiver process that they've offered other agencies in lieu of exclusions. It seems to be a pretty good tool. It would allow us to waive the coastal development permit requirement for many types of development, provided we notice Coastal Commission and give them an opportunity to overrule that decision. But it sounds like a promising alternative. The Coastal Commission has also requested that we expand our current 35-foot environmentally sensitive habitat setback to 100 feet. These areas include SoCal Creek, Noble Gulch, Tannery Gulch, any riparian habitat, and Monarch Butterfly Habitat. In addition, the Commission would like us to add new upland areas which support any plants considered sensitive by the California Native Plant Society. Our concerns here are that 100-foot setbacks could preclude remodels and new development in many developed areas of the city. And we have serious concerns about using a nonprofit interest groups listing of plants as the basis for when this habitat's sensitive. And again, these are kind of just rough images that I cooked up just to give an idea. Riverview Terrace along the creek, I mean, many of those lots would effectively become undevelopable. And I know that probably has particular interest to a couple of our commissioners. Similarly, you look at Noble Gulch, it'd be the same thing, when you have, you know, houses along Monterey Avenue.
You wouldn't be able to tear it down. You'd be able to remodel it.
That is a good question. I'm not sure yet. The way I read it, you would not be able to do significant remodels. One of the things I have talked to the Coastal Commission about was, I don't think we as a city, nor they as a state agency, could deny a building permit because of geologic hazards or sea level rise issues. They're ministerial decisions. It's in state law. If you comply with building code, we shall issue a permit. They weren't aware of that, so, you know, we'll try to cross that bridge. From my perspective, I think you continue to do remodels. Additions might be another story.
Right. I'm thinking of, you know, 35 feet. I know there are people who've done remodels within the 35 feet along the creek over the period of time. So it sounds like we could, you know, get away with some things.
You know, I'm hoping that there's going to be reasonable outcomes for all of this.
But when the house burns down?
There are provisions for repairing houses lost to fire, other, you know, forces of nature and things like that, so. Coastal Commission did ask that we add a new water quality, stormwater erosion control chapter to our zoning code. We have concerns with this because we currently regulate it through another chapter of our municipal code. It'd be staff's preference not to move it to the zoning code because any change that we have would then trigger an LCP amendment. And the stormwater regulations seem to change every year. It seems like every 12 to 18 months, the state makes a change and we have to change our ordinance, and it would just make it for a much more time-consuming bureaucratic process. And I'd also have some concerns that that might subject erosion control-type projects to getting coastal development permits, which I don't think would benefit anybody. So that's the end of my coastal doom and gloom. Like I said, though, we are continuing to talk to them. Their supervisor there seems, you know, to be pretty reasonable and want to work out solutions that work for us. Some of their lower-level staff, I think, are much more regulatory, but we're continuing to work with them, and hopefully, we'll be able to, you know, get good solutions to some of these. And they'll be before us in about a month or so, so maybe they can fill us in on the direction they want to go.
Got a question.
Yeah, cool.
So going back to the beginning part where you were talking about the geological hazard setback, I thought that was from bluffs.
So in our current code, it is. It only applies to bluffs. What they did-
Not on a bluff.
Excuse me?
I didn't understand how it applied to the village because that's not on a bluff.
So the current code's bluffs. What they did is they reviewed our geologic chapter and said, sort of summarily, this is inadequate. Here's a proposal that we have given Marin County. I reviewed that, and it includes shoreline erosion, flooding, tsunamis, and just about every other form of natural disaster that you need to account for.
It's a whole different situation. They're talking about a setback from the mean high tide or something.
That's right.
Which, like, the whole village couldn't be built.
That's right. We'd be going up to Cherry Street at least before we could start building again, maybe even Fanmar. So we don't think it's realistic, you know. I'm still cautiously optimistic, particularly because there's other bigger agencies fighting this, this issue right now than us, and they're ahead of us that it's going to get worked out. But, you know, in case it doesn't, you know, we want everybody to be aware of it.
Tell us, Mike, has there anybody embraced it yet? Is there any agencies that-
Well, fortunately, there has been. From my review, though, Grover Beach has accepted a lot of it, but they don't have any development in these areas. I mean, if you're familiar with the area, they don't have bluffs and development on the bluffs. They've got a wide sandy beach, so by the time you're in towards development, it's way over, you know, a couple hundred feet. Pacific Grove is also a little bit more open to it, but again, along their coastline, it's mostly undeveloped. They have a research lab that they have concerns about, but otherwise, it really doesn't affect any existing development. So you have some agencies like that where, you know, it doesn't matter to them, so they accept it. County has serious concerns. Marin County, I saw their red lines. They took what the Coastal Commission wrote up and scratched 3/4 of it. So, you know, we do have their attorney that lives in town, and he may have some insights, too.
Question. Let's say that we get through and we adopt our updated zoning code. Do we go forward and begin functioning under the new code even while they figure out if they're going to accept it or not?
We could outside the coastal zone. Inside the coastal zone, it wouldn't go into effect until they certified it.
Which really affects the theater sites because they say they're waiting for that to be approved.
And we've talked to them about this.
It affects, you know, I think about at least a third, if not more, of Capitola, probably half of Capitola.
I mean, my guess is if they held steadfast with some of these requests, we would just never, we would never adopt it. We would live with our existing zoning code.
All this work.
I mean, that's a worst-case scenario.
Are there any efforts to work together with other agencies at Marin County to you have a more common voice and?
I've exchanged a couple of emails with them. I've, you know, like I said, I've talked to the county planning director. I've talked to one of the planners in Pacific Grove just to see where they're at. From my perspective, you know, my recommendation would be even if we think they're going to reject it, everybody submit, put it in front of their commission, and let them start denying, you know, people over and over that want to update their plans with these rules. And hopefully politically, there's some pressure eventually to, you know, loosen up a little bit.
So didn't they originally want the city to rewrite the local coastal plan as part of its general plan update?
Yes. I think they would still prefer that. They've conceded that as long as it's consistent, they would allow it to go through, but they haven't done that analysis. I have. I don't see any major issues, aside from the fact that a lot of our LCP is just, it's meaningless now. There's a lot of information there that's very old and outdated.
So, you know, at what point is this, I mean, it's obviously public right now because we're at this meeting talking about it, but it seems like this is going to have a tremendous impact, not only on the theater side, but for, you know, all the people who live along SoCal Creek, all the people who live in the Village, you know, going up to Cherry and Fanmar, you know. At what point do people who own properties in that area become aware of, you know, what's being proposed? And, I mean, how do we deal with that public outreach? Because it seems to me it's something, I mean, it would have, you know, unbelievable impact on-
Yeah, I agree.
-Capitola Village property owners.
I mean, I was somewhat cautious coming here tonight because I didn't want to sound too alarmist about it. I think it's important that we all understand the challenges that we have in front of us, but there is time to work it out. And I think until we realize that they're going to be firm with those requests, and we know what they are, because they've said they'll compromise, so we need to see what some of that compromise is. But once we have a better understanding of what they really want, and if it's something we can't accept, I think we do need to engage some of the public-
Yeah.
...and make sure they're aware of it.
And do that in concert with, you know, at the same time as the other agencies so that it's a huge impact. If that was coordinated, it would mean a lot more.
It'd be nice if it was coordinated, yeah.
But you're referring to staff negotiations, right? I mean, you're talking with staff, and actually, it's the Coastal Commission ultimately that, or do they just typically accept the staff recommendation?
You know, I haven't had extensive experience working through, between the staff and the Coastal Commission. What I have, generally, they accept it. I mean, they'll modify it a bit. I mean, maybe Susan has some more insight. You know, there's been a leadership change, so I don't know how that'll affect us. They're going to get a new executive director presumably in the near future, so maybe there'll be some cultural changes there. I really don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think right now what's going on is huge and huge for Capitola, and we really are going to have to decide how much we're willing to give up. Do you have a new zoning ordinance, or do we just keep what we have because their requirements are going to be ones that we can't live with? And, you know, this is only the beginning. They've only looked at several sections of our zoning ordinance. And from past discussions, I think, you know, parking's going to be one. They're going to have a lot of issues and comments about, and maybe even our permit parking program and how all of that works, so.
Yeah, I did bring up some of those issues with their staff. I said, you know, is this something, do you view this as an opportunity to look at our residential permit parking program, beach management plan? These are things I've heard since I've been here. There's another issue. Free Village parking has come up in the past, and they said no, although I think the beach management plan they do want as part of an LCP update at some point. But they told me residential parking permit program is not something they're looking at. We'll see.
Is there a comment at the last meeting about having a representative from the coastal-
Yeah, we're going to work with them to get them scheduled, hopefully later in May, possibly June, and they'll come give a presentation. And I'm hoping to work some things out a little bit before them. I don't want to blindside them and bring them here and have you all angry at them or anything, so.
We never get angry.
From time to time, because to me, it's just extremely overreaching from everywhere, and I always thought they were overreaching in the first place, so it'll be interesting to see where we go.
It seems radical to me.
It is radical, yeah.
Runaway, sort of, you know. I have a couple of specific questions about what you mentioned. You were talking about the cumulative life of remodeled projects over 50%. But you said the life of the project. What did you mean by?
So the property. So I think if you were in a-
The life of the property.
Yeah, if you're in a bluff retreat zone and you have a single-family home and you want to put a roof on, I think the idea is, we would put a valuation on that roof repair, and we would, we would put it on the website because they want to see it, so we're tracking it. And then they come in for a water heater, and we add that to their previous re-roof.
But it starts at the inception of this new plan, okay. And what about historic structures? Is there any?
There was nothing in the draft regulations I saw that would give extra development rights to historic structures.
Okay, thank you.
But they would include a repair of a roof as a remodel?
Yeah, including interior remodels. You know, if you want to remodel your kitchen, we would presumably put a valuation on that, post it on the website, and anyone could go in there and look at your house, how much valuation we did, and we'd be busy in there, entering our data every week on the building permits we issued. Administratively, I don't like the idea at all.
A little bit away from public access to me, but, well, thanks for that.
Thanks for that.
I just want to know, how do we vote for not these people anymore?
Can we concede? Can we concede?
We could do that, yeah. It was at the State of Jefferson. It floated around every now and again, from here to Portland.
Well, there've got to be other places like Balboa and Newport Beach and places in Southern California that are going to be, you know, significantly impacted by this. So it's not going to be just little Capitola, and we shouldn't be the one doing this big fight. We need some of those-
We need some other voices.
Big guys.
Is it FEMA?
And if Marin County doesn't like it-
No, they want to go above FEMA restrictions. But I agree. I mean, it's somewhat hopeful that Marin County's quite a bit further ahead than we are, because, you know, they've, I think, got the juice to push back where it's hard for us.
Yeah, it seems like it'd just be nice to have a common voice if we could get on board with those other groups and have a common voice. That would be nice. Any more questions? Okay, are we ready to move into the zoning staff report?
Okay. Thank you, Chair Welch and planning commissioners. Good evening. We're going now to start the pickup where we left off from Monday night on the zoning code update. We have thus far made it through Part 1, enactment and applicability, and Part 2, zoning districts and overlay zones. And we began the citywide standards on Monday evening. The next discussion item, Attachment 3 in the packet, is the discussion items, and I also gave you an updated handout this evening, is the list of items that were requested for discussion by the commissioners. The first discussion item is accessory structures. And Commissioner Smith, during her review, asked about electricity. This, when an accessory structure comes in with either electricity or plumbing, it then triggers a design permit and a building permit, and the design permit requires Planning Commission approval. So the plumbing seemed logical in terms of human habitation and having plumbing out to an accessory structure, but electricity, the question came up of, well, can I have a simple light bulb and a light out there so when I'm going through my storage facility I can see at night? And there was also similar questions that came up in a different part of the code by Commissioner Westman about office, I think, in these uses. So, you know, having a light would probably lead to the possibility of utilizing that space a little differently than storage, but that's the discussion we'd like to have tonight is electricity. Should we keep that as a trigger for a design permit or allow electricity out to our accessory structures?
So she kind of gave you my thoughts on the subject. If you're going to have an 80-square-foot space, it seems to me that it's going to be, you know, a usable space, and having a light bulb and an electrical outlet makes sense. And it's not, it doesn't automatically turn it into an office. It's simple.
Well, I don't think there's any restriction on it being used as an office. I mean, we have that it can't be for human habitation, but that doesn't mean that someone can't have a small art studio in there, or they can't have, you know, outside office or something. I mean, I don't think we've, we've ever restricted that. So, you know, it does seem reasonable that, you know, you could have electricity out there.
Is that, does anyone have concerns with electricity being taken out of the list of what would trigger a design permit? If we were to remove it, it would just say if it's 80 square feet or more, or more than 80 square feet, if it's over eight feet high, and if it has plumbing, that would require-
Just misspilled, by the way.
Oh, sorry.
It's the kind of plumbing when you're growing plums.
Sorry about that.
It's right in here.
The other plumbing.
The other. The other.
So my concern about, I didn't have a concern with that. What my concern was, we had this come up earlier last year where we had a resident who wanted to put a feature in their yard that was, I don't know the specifics, but it was basically a wall that was a feature in their yard. It wasn't, it was like six foot high, maybe five foot high. It was solid concrete. It wasn't enclosed in any way. It was just a single wall. And that was, we determined that to be an accessory structure, is it, I believe? And so it seems to me like it lands, it was more of a landscaping use than an accessory structure. It's not something that, it didn't have electricity or plumbing in it. It was just a, an outside, used for, I guess they were using it for like a bar outside, like just a concrete wall, so.
I can clarify that. In that scenario, that was, it met our definition of structure because it was permanently affixed to the ground and it was located in a setback. So that was where we could not allow it to be within the side yard setback.
So this is worded the same way though, right? So you could have that same.
This, with a one, with an accessory structure, you're allowed to, you can, they can actually be in your rear or side yard setbacks. They're required to have the front yard setbacks, so it's behind the front of the home. But it, if it's less than 80 square feet and it doesn't have electric or plumbing, then you don't need a permit for it. I think there are two different scenarios where this is accessory structure and.
Or if you have a second one, so what if you have two?
If you have a second one, it needs to meet setback requirements.
So if you have an accessory structure and then you want to put this wall in your yard, then that would be considered a structure also, what an accessory structure?
So the wall is separate from an accessory structure? It's a structure?
It's just a structure.
A structure.
But it did not fall under this?
So it didn't fall under this. It was something within the setbacks, that it would be an encroachment within the setbacks?
Okay, it was a setback issue.
Yeah, it was a setback issue.
Right, and I wanted to talk about definitions for walls and fences when we get to that area, that maybe we'll clear some of that up.
Okay, good.
So is everybody okay with deleting electrical fixtures from number?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So discussion number 19, Commissioner Westman had asked the question, within our new code for accessory structures, does the new code allow apartments above a garage? And it was interesting to go through the code and try to answer that question. The answer would be yes, you can have an apartment above a garage, but the code is not very clear to get to that yes, so we need to clarify. Accessory structures, within the accessory structures portion of the code, it's very clear that accessory structures may not be designed or used for human habitation, except for secondary dwellings, which is a different chapter, section 17.74. And then within 17.74, we have a new allowance for two-story secondary dwelling units. And there's no language that prohibits a garage from being in the first story. So as long as you comply with the setback requirements and height requirements of that secondary dwelling unit, you could have a, it could be above a garage. Okay? And then when it's connected to the home, you, if you have a garage that's attached to the home, you can also have a secondary dwelling unit above the garage. It would just have to meet all the setback and height requirements of the primary structure. Okay? And I also included, we'll get to these later, but what the development requirements are for secondary dwelling units. But any questions there? Would you like to see any changes other than clarification within the code about a garage is allowed in the first story?
I just had a question, and I know this is my mistake, so I'm going to show my ignorance. On table 1752-1 on page 52-2, in that table it says setbacks minimum. And then it goes over and it says 40 foot for detached garages. And then down at the little drawing below that, it says detached garage is only 40 foot maximum. So what am I missing on the?
That max should be a min. Minimum.
Am I missing, it's minimum?
No, you're correct. That's a great correction.
So we're saying that you can't have a detached garage unless it's set back 40 feet off the street?
That's how the code has been and we carried it over from the previous code.
So if you have a property that has a detached garage that's less than 40 feet, what does that mean in terms of being able to remodel or do anything with that structure?
They would be held to the 80% calculation of not putting more than 80% of the value into that detached structure. Except during our issues and options discussion, we modified that so that there's an allowance for these to continue as legal non-conforming structures that would not be held to that standard. So there's many garages and accessory structures that are really close to the rear property lines and side property lines. And we had looked at that during issues and options and direction from both the planning commission and the city council was to build in an allowance within the non-conforming so that it's not subject.
Okay. And I have one other question that we didn't discuss already on 1752, number 4A4. All accessory structures shall be set back a minimum of three feet. And I'm just wondering why that would be?
That's a fire code.
Separation between the two buildings.
You have to have three feet.
So if you need to have a, an accessory structure to house, for example, the battery bank for a solar system, you can't put that against the primary unit? You have to have a three-foot separation from the primary unit to put it on the side?
I think that's correct. And I mean, there are provisions in the building codes that allow exceptions. I think one of them is if you have a fire-rated wall on the home, so it might, something like that might require you to do some improvements to the house to fire insulate that portion of the wall. But otherwise, I think you do have to observe that three-foot setback. That's something we could follow up on and give you a more concrete answer on that.
Because I know it didn't used to be that way.
That rule's been there for a while, the three-foot separation.
Well, if it's a fire code rule, why don't we just not make it a zoning code rule also and just incorporate the?
You know, this is one, in one case where I think it's good to repeat it because, you know, as planners will look at something, we look at the zoning code. We don't pull up the building codes. And oftentimes, they're not looking at the planning level plans that closely.
How do we make an exception for it as an example for a solar batter? I know I have one on the side of my house and it's large and it was, you know, required and it went through all of the permitting process and everything. And it is on the side of a garage, so there is a firewall there, I would assume. But I didn't get any, I didn't have any issues getting it through.
So we do have kind of that caveat, excuse me, in A4 that says, or is otherwise required by the California Building Code. And we could tweak that a bit and say, or, as otherwise allowed by the California Building Code.
Okay.
But we'll follow up on that and give you a better, I think that's a good question.
Allowed or required because it.
Sure.
Could be more strict, could be stricter or less strict.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other comments within this section of code for accessory structures and uses?
It might be worthwhile to point out that we did add some additional details for setbacks for certain types of accessory structures, things like swimming pools, jacuzzis, fire pits. I don't know if you each reviewed them, but if you haven't, it might be good to look at that. Those are new because we do encounter those problems sometimes. I remember one planning commission meeting where they want to put a fire pit in the right of way, and at least from staff, we said you got to have some setback for those types that use to produce smoke or noise or splashing water. So those are all new.
Okay. Chapter 17.56 is archaeological and paleological resources. Within this section of code, we had edits towards the reference, towards creating a reference towards the coastal section of the code, but other than that, there were no comments. Would anyone like to discuss?
I didn't have anything. Nope, doesn't look like it.
Okay, moving on. Within the next section of code is fences and walls, something that seems so simple but is oftentimes one of the most highly debated planning items over the counter. So with this, we've tried to clarify a lot of the language and better define how the standards are measured. And there was some comments about the trellises being extended to 10 feet for an edit, which is an easy edit. But other than that, there were no discussion items requested within fences and walls? But it's my understanding that Commissioner Westman has some.
Right. I thought that we ought to have a definition about fences and walls because I agree if someone's going to put up a decorative wall in their backyard that's not a fence, but, you know, it's a wall around a barbecue area or they're just trying to, you know, screen a space in their yard that they want to have the wall around the patio. I, to me, those are different than fences and walls which are on the property line. So I was trying to figure out how to do it. And I was thinking one way to clarify it might be, you know, in our definition section, which we haven't really worked on yet, coming up with the definition for, you know, what you mean when you say fence or wall in this chapter.
We could also probably add to decorative features and materials under section B to explain that there's an allowance for a decorative wall that helps with screening. This actually comes up occasionally in which there's been, when there's a use next door that also the, you know, the six plus eight plus two, the eight-foot fence height, we have had people come in and ask for trellis structures, which were allowed to be up to 10 feet, but just in a more decorative way to grow the vines, but also to create more of a shield, so. Is 10, would you want to set a standard to it of 10 feet?
I'm not worried about that area. I'm wor, I was trying to address the issue which TJ brought up about, you know, if someone is just going to be building a wall in their rear yard and it's, you know, going to be more of a decorative feature in their yard, going to have a barbecue, built-in barbecue pit next to it, something like that, does that wall need to, are we saying that that wall needs to fit into walls as they're describing in this chapter? Are we going to have something different for walls that are not on property line or in setback areas?
So chapter 17160 does have a definition of fence, so perhaps it would be useful to look at that right now as part of this conference.
So where?
160?
Chapter 17160, the glossary.
Oh. Page 160-5.
Yeah, but it doesn't say anything about walls.
Yeah, I think we definitely need to add a definition for walls. It's something, I don't know if we heard from feedback from the commissioners, some we identified as staff as something that was missing.
There is a definition for wall.
There is, yeah.
160-15.
And I think we also talked about addressing standards for retaining walls that would be similar to fences when they're visible. But I think Commissioners, Commissioner Westman's comments about these decorative wall features in a non-visible location, we should treat differently. And I think that's an easy fix. We can put it in the code.
Okay. One more question regarding it. If we were to put it in our encroachment section of the code to allow it to encroach in the side yards and rear yards, would you also like them to be allowed at a certain height within the front yard?
Certainly at a certain height. I see no reason why you couldn't have a three and a half foot wall in your front yard somewhere as a decorative feature.
Okay.
Or below the fence line, maybe six feet, below six feet?
Well, in the front yard, it's, you know, it's supposed to be two, three and a half feet going back in that setback area.
I just have this one stuck in my mind where they built a wall that they, in the front, it's kind of an L shape. So they have their fence line at three and a half feet in the driveway area, but in their front yard where they put a fire pit and this little wall, the wall's probably four to five feet tall? I don't remember. Do you remember, Rich?
I don't recall the height. My recollection, I thought there was, you know, some seating built into it and maybe a barbecue or something. I didn't think it was simply a wall. I thought it was kind of this functional.
Well, I think it was a wall that they were using as a bar, so. But it didn't have, I don't believe it had plumbing or barbecue to it.
Right.
To be honest with you, I shouldn't say I don't know, but.
If I recall correctly, I think they permitted it, right? It was an issue of whether.
Yeah, there was.
They had to come and get a permit.
Yeah, there was a little bit of an issue because of the permit process. And then it was in a setback area and they were told, I think, something about the fire department wouldn't allow it because it was in this three feet from the house. But that would have been an exposure issue and the concrete is not really, I would assume.
But someone could come in and apply to do anything with walls or fences with a design review permit.
I think that's the passion because they were doing landscaping.
That's right.
And they didn't know they needed a special permit for it or something.
That's right.
But I guess what, really what I guess kind of concerned me was you could, you could only have one because they were saying it was a structure. So you couldn't have two walls or, it just seems when it comes to landscaping in your own property, there should be some flexibility given, but.
Yeah, when we get to landscaping, I think that's going to be an interesting discussion.
I did have, I had a question also. So we talked about the fence height as being a maximum of six feet. And then under 1760, or 60 on 60-3, it talks about parking lot screening. And then it says parking lot screening can be a minimum of six feet. So the maximum's a minimum now. And I get that if, and I'll use, you know, the depot hill area as an example along the railroad tracks. Why would you not be able to, because of the train and the trap where there's no backyard really going against you, be able to apply for maybe greater than six feet to eliminate noise from the, I hate to tie our hands, remember we had the one gentleman in here that was tied to the six feet and they wanted, the whole neighborhood was okay with him screening in his hot tub or something, but we're kind of bound by that, so.
This would be the time to change it if we wanted to allow extra height. I mean, maybe we could do so under certain conditions with findings. We could do it by right.
The fence height?
Right. And right now it's six foot maximum.
You know, that's so standardized throughout.
Hey, can't you put two feet of trellis?
Yeah, it has to be 50% open. This gentleman just didn't, he said he didn't like lattice.
That's right.
He didn't like lattice. That was his response to that, which didn't persuade anyone very much.
So I'm going back to the, next to a parking lot, you can have screening that is a six foot minimum. So if you're next to a parking lot, let's use our parking lot as an example, I would assume the neighbors around the lower pack cove, which is truly called Village Beach Parking Lot 2, they could have a higher fence there according to this?
I don't believe so, but I mean, I think you make a good point. And maybe one way to do it, if the commission would like to go this way, is to allow a higher fence if its purpose is clearly to attenuate noise. So those locations next to a rail corridor or a parking lot, I think we'd want to make it clear though, it's not to protect you from your neighbor's noise or something.
Not necessarily from privacy from neighbors. I get that, but I was, it seems like it's a conflict and I, and not necessarily conflict, I agree with what it's saying, but it seems like we may allow that in other areas if the findings indicate that.
Couldn't you get a variance?
Could.
Well, you could just get it through a design review permit. You don't even have to get a variance. It says the planning commission may allow fences and walls that deviate from height, placement and material standards with the approval of a design permit. So people can ask for anything they want. You just have to get a design permit and that's not a particularly complicated process.
I don't want to come in to see us.
One of the things I've been struggling with bringing up or not.
One of the things I've been struggling with bringing up or not is the people who live on major arteries. I know we've had people on Wharf Road occasionally come to us because the traffic noise is so loud. And we have a couple of people, I think, who do have higher fences there somehow, and I think we must have approved them at some point. But I do feel for people who are, you know, the traffic situation is worse and worse all the time. And I wonder if we want to take a look at giving people who live on our major arteries, certain streets, a higher front yard fencing, you know, just to give them a little bit more privacy and attenuate some of the noise.
And how would you decide what those streets are?
That is why I didn't really want to bring it up. But I feel like there's people on Wharf Road who have asked me about it, because they are smack on the street.
But they could come in and get, I mean, I think that certainly the current planning commission would give them a permit. And I think you're correct, there have been a number of permits given for people under special circumstances to have a higher fence longer. I think the new development that went in on Capitola Road, and I don't remember, there's three residential units, that wall that's there fronting on Capitola Road is higher than six feet.
Seventh, yeah.
Yeah. So I think we've been pretty good about giving people, when they can show there's, they're using it for, you know, trying to have a noise wall or a noise buffer.
Can maybe we put a line in there that just addresses that, that so when it comes to the planning commission, it shows that there's some.
I kind of like that suggestion. I mean, if that's the sentiment of the planning commission, so the future commissions see that wording there, and it encourages some exceptions in those unique circumstances.
Well, in that way, it's not a variance. It's, you know, a leeway. And the, at the end where it says that a legally established fence or wall that does not conform, blah, 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 has to be brought into compliance, I think we need to strike that. Because if you have a legally established fence or wall that's been approved, you shouldn't have to take it out simply because the code has changed. You know, if you need to repair it or.
Is that though, is it?
It's a 50% of it.
It's changing 50% or more of it.
Okay, so let's, let's say that you tear down the fence and rebuild it. That's more than 50% of it. You shouldn't have to make it. You shouldn't have to go through the whole process to get it approved again.
I'd like to agree with that. I've got a high hedge.
Yeah, if it was legally established, which meant it got a permit to be there. I mean, if somebody came in and got a design review permit and they have a permit for it, they could tear it down and rebuild it because.
Not the way it reads now.
Not the way it reads now.
I mean, it raises a policy question, is how important is it to conform to the new fence rules? I mean, if it's not that important, then you want to support people who have legally existing fences and allow them to continue those. If there's some really important policy goals that we're achieving by the new fence laws, then you want to get people to conform.
I think these are more really good points. Something I don't think we captured in this code, but it's kind of been a pet peeve of mine, is requiring people to get a fence permit to replace an existing fence. And I think if that's something we all agree on, I'd like to write that in, that if you have a fence and it needs to be repaired, you want to tear it down, put up a new one, you don't need to pay us more money to get a permit.
I think the way to go about this.
Yeah, I agree.
I just had to do that.
The whole thing, that one sentence you have in there about getting a design permit. I mean, if you could expand on that a little bit and put something in along the lines that the, that the planning commission determines whether there are appropriate circumstances, some standard along the lines that makes it clear that this is not as tough as a variance. But it's, gives some criteria for the planning commission.
Sounds good. And I like the idea of not having to pay fees to repair your fence that's fallen down. Because we want, we want people to fix them. We want them to maintain them.
I can add just a little bit of background on that one. There was, when we did the stakeholder outreach, it was a comment that came in about actually Prospector, or Prospect Avenue, and the higher fences along there that I think, in the front yard, that there was concern for ocean views, or while you're walking down the street to see out. So that is why that last standard was added. But I think we're hearing clear direction not to keep that in. So it's in, for those circum, there's just different circumstances.
I'm okay taking it out.
Wait a minute, walking along Prospect, front yard, fences too high?
On the ocean side, as you're walking down, the front yard fences are a lot higher than, they go beyond the three-and-a-half-feet standard. And the question came up, how can we make sure that over time those go away and that the fences are lowered? So that is why this standard is here. So there's, that's the other side to consider.
So you're talking about fences in the actual, the backyard along the bluff?
No, the front yard along the road.
Prospect, most of the houses have six-foot fences in front of them. And it's been a complaint for as long as I can remember that people, when they walk down that street, you have no visual corridors down anything to be able to see the ocean. And so there's, I mean, there have been requests for years to do something about the fences on Prospect. But personally, that's not an issue for me. I'm just trying to say that's, that's how.
This happened. So.
But we don't want to keep this in here, regardless of how it happened.
I'm in favor of taking it out.
I'm in favor.
I just wanted to voice that stakeholder concern.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else regarding fences? Okay, we'll move on to 17.64. And within 17.64, environmentally sensitive habitat areas, again, there were minor edits to titles of different sensitive areas.
So do we want to wait on this one since it's going to be so impacted by what the Coastal Zone does, what the Coastal Commission does?
We certainly could. We could also go through it very quickly as it's written and see if there's anything that the Commission, independent of those coastal concerns, would like changed or take the first bite at it. We could also push it back and deal with it once we get more from the Coastal Commission. The primary concern that I had with their comments, I think I brought up, was the expanded setbacks for these areas.
So the setbacks that are in this proposal are 35 feet?
Correct. They're exactly as written in the current code. We left them the same.
Yeah, there's nothing that's changed in this, right?
So we can just leave that and see if the Coastal Commission allows us to move forward?
I think so. There is some language, too, that I would point out that we need to do a little more research on. It's related to Monarch Cove. I think it's a relic of a permit, in a coastal development permit they received years ago. And I don't think they perfected that development. I don't think they ever built it.
You're talking about the permitted development location, 17-64-060. I don't think that subdivision ever got a final map and was ever approved.
That's what my belief is, too. We just haven't concluded that yet. But, so that language may be removed before we're all said and done.
We're in the process of going through the files.
And if you read it in isolation, it's hard to understand what it even means.
Yeah. Okay. And there, and during the edits, Commissioner Westman had asked if there was ever an allowance for docks in that section. And I went back through the previous iterations of this section, and there, I could not find anything regarding docks. So, okay, we'll move ahead to.
One other issue that I should bring to your attention, I think I've heard a couple Commissioners talk about it. And one of the comments from Coastal Commission was for the wood burning fireplaces, that as part of remodels, we also require existing ones to be decommissioned. And I think I've heard different sentiments about that, whether we should have wood burning fireplaces or not. I'm not sure if it's something you want to talk about or if you have opinions on, but that'll be an issue.
So it's only for remodels, right?
Yeah. They would like to see them phased out in some of these areas.
I'd love to see them phased out in most areas.
Well, I think this is a good way to begin the process citywide when we do it in just the environmentally sensitive habitat areas. Yeah.
I kind of struggle with that. We had a situation where they banned burning on certain days of fireplaces and ended up going there to respond. And it was an elderly lady, and that was her only heating source. So to me, to burn some of these, I mean, I think through time, over the years, they're just going to go away. I don't think we're going to see them around. But I hate to just ban them on a remodel, because I think some people, maybe on a lower socioeconomic scale, use them as a way of warming and not necessarily.
It's the only heat in half of my house. There's no heat in either.
To ban them, I'm just not in favor of doing that.
It's a major health problem for a lot of people. Major. So, you know, if you know somebody who's got breathing problems, it's a very serious, life-threatening, horrible thing to have. And they've been proven to be, you know, really one of the worst things in so many communities. And I think we're so far behind. So many communities have banned them already.
But here, we're only prohibiting them in these areas, where butterflies.
Right. And so that's what I'm saying. I think it's a really good first step to take.
Ban them, what they're talking about in the Coastal Commission, I just, I think some people have to use them.
Yeah, I think what they want is these areas in your monarch areas. So the wristband and up by Monarch Cove.
You know, I think if we need to do that at some point, maybe for our community, we need to think about having a fund that people can apply for, a hardship where they can put in a more efficient heating system. I mean, it's not going to be, you know, we could, we're not going to have that many cases of it, and it would be a really good thing to do for people.
Have we put that in somewhere in the residential design permit process? Have we said anything about wood burning fireplaces at all?
No.
We haven't. I know in the general plan, we had a goal to discourage the use of wood burning fireplaces, but we chose not to prohibit them outright.
I think we're moving slowly towards it, which is a good way to go. But I think, too, we can mitigate any hardship problems in our community. I mean, we do that with first-time home buyers. Other, we have other funds, don't we, for people who need to do repairs on their homes that can't afford to do it?
We do. I mean, we have some financing programs now, low-interest financing programs that we offer to residents that that would certainly qualify for. I mean, we could offer other types of incentives, waiving, building permit fees, things like that, if they want to convert to a more efficient heating source.
And I think we're seeing that we could go even further, you know. I agree. I think it shouldn't be a hardship for somebody. Heating shouldn't be, shouldn't be, you know, taken away from somebody.
Should we consider putting the same kind of language in the zoning code about discouraging wood burning fireplaces in new designs?
I think we certainly can. From staff's perspective, those words oftentimes like discourage it, you know, we tell them, oh, we'd rather not see it.
What does it mean? What if it?
It just means that.
It might make somebody think twice about it.
Yeah. It doesn't mean we won't approve a design permit.
If they want something else, they might say, okay, well, we're gonna, we won't put that in because we're going to ask for this other thing and we want it to look good.
Right.
Kind of thing. I'd be up for it, but I don't think there's, it doesn't seem to be a tenancy.
Green building, which I'm such a non-fan of, I mean, having a wood burning fireplace must pretty much just blow you away.
Well, in the very preliminary draft that we're working on, it's nowhere near ready for release. I think we did allocate some points, like a point or two, if you built something without a wood burning fireplace.
It could be the other way around, like a negative five if you put in a wood burning fireplace.
I'm sure our Commission on the Environment has something to say about this.
Yeah, I imagine they'd rather not have wood burning fireplaces.
Is anybody opposed to putting something, some language in there?
Yeah.
I like it. It's the next step. It's just another little incremental step.
Yeah. Okay, the next section is geological hazards. This is another one that we will spend more time with once we have redlines and the coastal review. But if there were minor edits to one section of what is included within a geological study, to remove the specificity of guideline number 37 and keep it more open. But other than that, there were no edits or discussion requested any tonight? Okay, we'll move on. The next chapter, we began to discuss a little bit at our last meeting. It's landscaping. Within the landscaping discussion, there were, there's some new standards, and this is definitely an area that has been elaborated on, but there were no specific discussion requested within the landscape session, section. So are there any items that we'd like to discuss tonight regarding landscaping?
I have one, and I apologize, I got to this section really today. On 1772-050B, the non-residential zoning districts, we say that in the mixed-use village and mixed-use neighborhood zones, outdoor dining areas, courtyards can count towards landscaping requirements, but in residential, they cannot. And I have a couple of examples where people have really gone out of their way in the front yard to build nice little courtyards and seated areas where they can sit and talk. And what it does is it brings the residents out in the front, and it makes the neighborhood really much more of a, you know, a circulating neighborhood. And I think it's a good thing. I think it's something that Capitola really enjoys and likes. So I would like to see outdoor dining areas and courtyards, especially in the front, at least, count in the landscaping area. It pretty much blocks off a large section of your front setback and says this all has to be landscaped. But if it's, if it's a courtyard that's going to bring people out and it's planted and it's nice, I don't see any reason that we would want them to plant it and plant instead.
Long as you only had one wall.
As long as it's a continuous wall.
No, I agree. And I think, especially in light of the water issues and stuff like now, it's just another bonus. So.
Are you done with that one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a more kind of fundamental issue with the landscaping chapter, which is the timing of applying these various standards. And this has been, I mean, because landscaping is so much more ephemeral than a building. And for example, water features. So you build a new house and you, your planning commission has to approve your water feature. But how about all of our existing houses if tomorrow we want to go put in a water feature? And which of these requirements apply to existing houses? Is that the only one? Are there others? Once a permit is issued and an occupancy permit is given, then they can tear out all landscaping and do whatever they want.
Exactly.
Yeah, under today's standards, we don't regulate single-family landscaping outside of a discretionary permit at all. On single-family, we can on multifamily, commercial, industrial. The proposed code would regulate remodels over 10% or more, so that we get into landscaping issues and whether or not.
Not a little problem with that. I mean, it seems to me that if you're going to do an addition that's 10%, it's like we waive a lot. You don't have to get design review permits. You get to, you know, staff can approve it, but you've got to redo all of your landscaping. And some people have, you know, very nice landscaping that's been there for years. I mean, the hedge in front of your house or some other things and.
I don't think they have to redo the landscaping. I think what we ask.
It has to conform to this chapter.
Yeah, it does. And now.
I think that's a pretty low threshold to make somebody redo their landscaping when we're not even going to make them go through a regular permitting process to get the addition done. I mean, I think we've got a.
But are they really going to have to redo all their landscaping? I don't think that's what it says.
Depending on what they have. If they have more than 25% of their yard and lawn, they would have to take it out.
Right.
Where do you get that?
Well, doesn't this say you can't have more than 25% of your yard areas in grass?
Know what I mean, but the applicability of this whole chapter is in 17.72.020.
It says the following projects shall comply with the requirements of this chapter. Additions that increase the floor area of a single-family dwelling by 10% or more.
So that's what triggers this whole chapter, which tells you when you can water. So only people who do one of those three things are regulated on when they can water.
I'm sorry, I was distracted. Could you repeat that, please?
It goes back to the same point I was trying to make, is that there's three situations where this chapter comes into play.
Right.
That's called applicability.
Yes.
And then you have all, you have provisions such as watering. And then you have all, you have provisions such as watering hours. So once you increase your property by ten percent, you now are subject to watering hours, whereas nobody else is.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the way I read it. Ben leaned over and said it wasn't the intent as he wrote it. And I gotta admit, I didn't pick up on that when I reviewed it. And once I did see it, I had concerns because in my mind, we now have a new permit. We have a landscape permit, because it's not triggered with a design permit. And, you know, more administrative work.
I just think, I don't mind it, construction of a new primary structure. I get that, that you're going to build a whole new house. You know, you put in all the landscaping, and you conform to the new requirements. You know, I don't think it should be for certainly small, minor additions.
I think certain, I think remodels over a certain percentage, ten percent seems...
You know, I would say it would need to be at least fifty percent or something, something like that.
Maybe we tie it to a design permit.
Yeah.
You know, four hundred square feet, that's, you know, or a second story. I mean, that may, at least links it really easily with an existing permit process.
The only thing that I would like to see continued here is the required content B, number seven, having to do with irrigation. I think it's a good, it would be a good practice for us to consider adding to this chapter. Anyone who does anything over ten percent needs to put in irrigation, maybe not change their landscaping, but that is something that the Water District is really moving.
Why if you don't irrigate it now, would you have to put in irrigation?
Because people probably do irrigate it by hand, and it uses a lot more water.
But a lot of the sections of people's yard...
They don't ever have to turn on the irrigation. If they're not watering now, they wouldn't have to. But if somebody wants to irrigate, and they're irrigating by hand, they're generally using a bunch more water. That's what the Water District tells us, and I would imagine they've done studies on it. So I think, you know, this is, this is their best practices, and I think our standards should, should respect those.
So you come in to Capitola and you buy a house, and you want to remodel that house and update it.
Add a bathroom.
Add a bathroom, update it, make it livable. And now you have to go in and install an irrigation system as well?
We can talk about the percentage. I mean, maybe it's not just about, you know, maybe it's more than ten percent. But I think if it's a certain percent, you need to add irrigation. I mean, it's, it's not that much.
What if somebody puts landscaping in on their new project that doesn't require irrigation? They're going to have to put it in anyway?
What, what plant do you know that doesn't require irrigation?
Well, supposedly, if you plant with native plants.
But they need to be established for three years before you can lessen irrigation.
Well, you know, I don't, I can see an argument both ways, but I also, the Water District is all over this enforcement of irrigation systems and, and use of water. I kind of see, I kind of see both sides of it. I'll tell you the problem I have. I put it in, but now I'm having to go back and replace it because those little spigots break, and now you're
And they clog up.
Using a lot more water than what you really thought you were using. So it could go both ways for me. I don't...
I'm just saying, I trust their best practices because I think they've done their homework.
But I'm saying, so let those people enforce it.
So let them do that. Do we need it in our zoning ordinance?
Well, if we have a zoning ordinance that doesn't, I think we're, we're setting someone up to not put it in at a time when they would put it in. Ben, it looks like...
So, so I could, I'm sorry.
The Water District's rules I like better because they apply to everyone all the time and aren't triggered by changes in your property.
Right.
It's a much better system because it's universal.
Right. I don't think just because somebody adds, you know, a master bathroom onto their house.
I agree.
We want to get into, you know, suddenly regulating their landscaping.
I agree, but let's say a remodel of fifty percent or more of their house.
One possible approach to this is to say that if there's a remodel to a single-family dwelling, and there's landscaping that is installed as part of that remodel, that that landscaping needs to comply with section oh six oh, which is the landscape standards having to do with plant selection and irrigation and water efficiency. It wouldn't require anybody to rip out the existing landscaping on their property and replace it with completely new, which would be kind of a ridiculous thing, even though that's what this draft says. But that might be a, might be a sensible kind of compromise approach.
Yeah, that, that's fine. That's good. I can live with that.
And is that the only...
And I do think...
Piece that triggers for residential? And the rest of this chapter triggers for commercial, industrial, multifamily, and planned development only?
I think we need to deal with B, you know, with that ten percent, I think should be like fifty percent or take it out.
Or take it out, and you have A and C for the...
Yeah. I would take it out and just leave A and C.
Yeah. If we take it out, what about the idea of saying that landscaping installed is part of the...
Yeah, that, that works for me.
I can live with that.
So the rest of the chapter only applies to non, the commercial, industrial, multifamily, and planned development, and not single-family dwelling, or is that not what we're saying?
It does with new development, and anything with a design permit, we open up the landscaping package.
Right. Okay. Because the other thing about the whole landscaping chapter that I found really imposing on, on single-family homes is that, I mean, we've never, when, when I came in and did the remodel on the two houses that I did, which were three years apart, so I have two different experiences, we had to provide a landscaping plan. We had to implement the landscaping plan, at least get it well down the path before we got final. But I didn't have to have a professional come and provide all the contours of the existing land and everything else. It was a simple landscaping plan that didn't cost me a lot of money. And when I read all of these requirements, it seems like we're now going to burden the residents with a much bigger, much more formalized landscaping plan than we have in the past, and I'm not sure we want to do that.
I think, I think I had to have a landscape architect stamp.
Yeah, you do. You do for new, for new construction, you do.
New construction, but not for remodel.
I'm not concerned about new construction.
Right, no, I...
But I also think we can go with, you know, a certain percentage that's way higher than the ten percent. But if somebody's doing a substantial remodel on their home, fifty percent or more, sixty percent or more, I think landscape plans should be part of that, because what happens during those remodels is that everything gets trashed. And we need to make sure that it looks good in the, on the front, maybe just the front. I don't know.
And, and a landscaping plan is one thing, but defining these required contents for a landscaping, my landscaping plan didn't come anywhere close to this stuff.
And you're, tell me where you are.
Yeah, B, the required contents.
Right.
Page seventy-two dash two.
These, a lot of people come in and have written, have designed, have drawn it out themselves. You know, they don't have a landscape architect do it. They just simply draw a little diagram of things. And I think that's helpful and good, and I think we've always asked for that.
Yeah, but it doesn't meet these required contents lists, is what I'm saying.
So what you're saying is the required contents list should come out, and we'll let the staff sort of... Because you have a landscape architect on the Arkon Site Review Committee. So it seems like that's where it ought to establish what's needed in the landscape plan. And it will be different depending on the size of the project. If somebody's landscaping a ten-by-twenty-foot area, that's completely different than somebody who's landscaping, you know, in front of a new commercial building.
Exactly. And for, for, you know, commercial, industrial, the multifamily, new developments, and that kind of stuff, I think this is a good list, and it should be that well thought out. But for residential, and we took out...
You're, you're talking about taking it out for new residential, like brand-new residential?
No, for remodels.
Yeah, yeah.
Because you've changed the... No, we took that out. So it's only construction of new primary structures now that we're requiring them.
Our additions.
I don't think Dale has agreed to taking that out yet. I suggested taking it out.
Now, Ben had language he thought was for B.
Yeah. I like Ben's...
It seems like there's maybe two ideas on the floor right now regarding this. It's either eliminating B entirely, with my additional suggestion, or keeping B in and changing the ten percent to a much higher efficiency.
I'm in favor of eliminating B entirely and going with your wording.
And what was your wording?
My wording was to say that for a remodel or addition to a single, an existing single-family dwelling, that only landscape standards and oh-six-oh apply, and only to the proposed new landscaping that's part of that remodel.
Okay. So what happens if somebody does a, you know, fifty, seventy-five percent remodel, and they tear up the front yard, and it's left torn up because there's nothing we can do to force them to fix it, to give them an occupancy permit, and it's, because this does happen, and it stays that way?
Because they're going to get a design review permit to do that size remodel, and as part of that design review permit, they have to submit a landscaping plan anyway.
Okay. So, okay, I'm okay with that, as long as that's really going to happen. But isn't this whole section required by state law anyway? I mean, are, are the specifics not required? I mean, it says right here, this, this section is new and is required by state law.
Well, that's just oh-three-oh about the very large-scale landscaping.
Okay, got it. I'm sorry, I didn't actually see that. Okay, got it.
Can we talk about D, the last section, maintenance? How is that going to work? This is for commercial, I understand, if they have use permits or whatever.
Seventy-two dash five, last section.
So if you build a new...
If I plant geraniums, I got to keep those geraniums.
If you build a new house, which puts you within this, then your mulch is subject to a permanent review?
This is, if this moves forward in the code and we had a code enforcement complaint, we would follow up on it.
Okay.
Because it's in the code, so I think this is a good area to discuss, because in reviewing the mulch standard, that's probably something you don't want staff time on, unless we want to limit this to commercial areas and for maintenance standards. But this is something that in our initial review of the code, we also had concerns.
I mean, this is a policy decision. Do we want the city to basically?
No.
Be, be mulch.
We don't want mulch monitors.
Well, it's, I mean, it's more than that. We use that because it's facetiously, but it's just generally, do we want to be able to go around and say, you know, your landscaping is enough? It's not. There are various, and there are a lot of houses around that, this will be more than the vacation rental enforcement, believe me.
You have a longer, we talk about this, the more I'm uncomfortable I get with this level of regulation on residential landscaping, it's, it's...
Yeah, I do, I'm very uncomfortable with it.
But how did we get residential added in? Because the old code only addressed commercial, multifamily, you know, it didn't address residential.
I, I share the concern, so I guess my best answer is to confess that, you know, I probably didn't review it closely enough because I really don't want to be in the business of enforcing this. I mean, if it's the desire of the city that we do that, we will. But we have competing priorities, and some things I think are much more important than that, so I, I'm with you.
I like the idea that when someone came in for a new residential unit, they had to provide a landscape plan. Or if they're going to do a major remodel, they have to provide a landscape plan for the front yard as part of their design review permit, and that landscaping needed to mostly be in before they were ever given an occupancy permit. And that works real well for single-family. And for commercial and multifamily, I have no difficulty with monitoring their landscaping, and if it falls apart, telling them that they have to go back in and redo the landscaping. But I don't think we should do that for single-family residential units.
I agree.
They're going to have to hire two more people just to implement this section of the code.
Yeah, I agree.
And you don't want to discourage people from doing landscaping that's appropriate. And I know a bunch of places that don't use mulch in their yard, and you don't want them to have to. So I think this whole chapter needs to go back.
And sometimes, you know, we've gone in completely torn-out our landscaping and re-landscape with different landscaping that ultimately looked a lot better. You don't want, you want...
Right. No, you don't want to discourage that.
So can we live with that?
So are we going to add terminology that when there is new landscaping as part of a design plan?
Right.
It is, it's irrigated? Is that, is that, I mean, it has to have irrigation? I would really like to see that, you know, if somebody is redoing...
I think it already did. Mine did. Mine required it.
We've never codified it. I don't think it's, it's, it's in our...
They're going to, they're going to present a landscaping plan, and, you know, you can decide if that, if it needs irrigation or not.
All landscaping needs irrigation. There isn't a plant in the world that doesn't need to get watered. You have, especially the first three years, even if it's zero-scaping, you have to water for the first three years in order to establish the root system. Then you have to rely on the fact that you actually had a rainy season, which we may not be having from now on. So I just, I...
I agree with Commissioner Newman. I think that's an issue that the Water District deals with, and it should be citywide, not just...
Well, there's a lot of things that have to come into conformance when you do something to your home that, that you, that no, citywide people don't do. I mean, you have to repair a sidewalk, you have to underground utilities, you have to do all kinds of things that happen because, that get triggered because you're doing something to your home. So I think irrigation, if you're working on a brand-new irrigation plan, doesn't add that much cost, and...
Can't that be part of the landscape plan review for a new residence?
It is required.
I think it should be for a new residence, and I would hope, but I don't think there's a lot of support for it for something over fifty percent, a remodel over fifty...
Didn't we take the threshold out of remodel because we're tired of calculating it?
Remodels have gone.
So it, I like the language, I mean...
If, we talk about if they have, if they have a landscape plan in their remodel, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, if, if they, if they have to submit for a design permit, then they should include a landscaping plan that includes irrigation for any new landscaping.
Or any disturbed, you know, severely disturbed exterior. Because what's going to happen is they're going to say, well, I don't want to do that, and I'm not going to change my landscaping, and then the construction's going to happen, and the whole thing's going to get wrecked, and they're going to do it.
So you would have to do it with a design permit. I mean, one other item to keep in mind that might address some of Commissioner Ortiz's concerns is when we do update the green building ordinance, we're going to put a lot of increased water efficiency standards in there. Currently, green building ordinance applies to additions and remodels over three hundred fifty square feet of any single-family home. So they won't be required necessarily to select all those water efficiency measures, but to get their necessary points, they probably will employ a number of them. So that's another way to try to get some of those improvements.
But not everybody has to do the green building, right?
If you, if it's under three hundred fifty square feet, you're exempt.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay.
And it's a remodel. So if you're remodeling interior three hundred fifty square feet or more...
I don't think I'm getting a lot of traction here, so I'm willing to just say, okay. I hope we do a little more reading on this subject, because I'm, and we're going in the wrong direction here.
You got the, I mean, this needs to be revamped quite a bit here now.
We'll get to work.
Get to work.
So I'm going to try to summarize, because there was quite a bit. So within applicability, we'll remove B for additions that increase floor area of a single-family dwelling of ten percent or more. When we get to...
But we're going to add something there.
We're going to add there that, the requirement that... So within a remodel, remodels are, for any area of the landscape that is disturbed, they're subject to section seventeen point seven-two-zero-six-zero landscape standards, which includes A, the general standards, and it sounds like there was, we were just debating over whether or not to include the irrigation and water efficiency standards in B, and that will not be included in that requirement? Okay, and then within D, for maintenance, that will only be subject to multifamily development and commercial development.
Right. And on B, where the required contents, though, that is for commercial and multifamily.
For B, for irrigation?
No, for the required contents, what has to be in the landscaping plan.
Okay.
And that's for...
Commercial and multifamily.
Yeah, because the...
How about the outdoor dining areas and courtyard? I, I would like to see residential only apply to the new landscaping. I mean, I thought we were going to take residential out of all of this, and just if you need a design permit for... a design permit for a residential remodel, I don't care what it is, then that's the only part that applies. You, you need a landscaping plan and it needs to address irrigation.
And, you know, the landscaping plan will include, could include outdoor dining area, courtyards, all his features as part of the landscaping plan. Landscaping doesn't have to be grass and bushes. It could be a bench, it could be a number of, landscaping.
So within that required landscaping areas, A, number two will add more detail to also allow outdoor dining areas, courtyard or similar feature?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll read it when you rewrite it and see if it, as long as residential doesn't apply to most of what's in this chapter, I'm okay.
I agree with that.
I've got a question about table seventeen seventy-two one. And does industrial, is that changed? No landscaping is required in industrial? I thought there was some landscaping required in industrial right now.
I believe there is within the front yard.
Yeah, so now we're not going to require any?
We can take a look.
Now pull up the existing codes.
Why don't you add that to the next line?
Is determined by the permanent.
Right.
So that's, so that's freeway frontage. Really, the only industrial we've got is freeway frontage. And to me, I think we want to have a little something, you know.
I like Ed's suggestion is determined by the permit approval process because in some of them, it's, it's silly to add five feet of landscaping in the, I mean, it doesn't make sense. It needs to be part of a cohesive plan.
Right. So it's, I, I would like it somewhere to say that there has to be some, but, but it is.
Right.
So does, is that what that means in the POS PDPA as determined? Does that mean that there's a chance that they could get away without doing any?
So what do we say in the industrial zone section about?
It says in item three, it says.
Visitors, except in I's on a.
Commercial on the twenty-four.
Well, it does say.
It says except, except in I's on industry.
All required for.
With the exception of.
Yeah, right, so it's saying none, yeah. We have to, number three needs to be.
We can make that change to move that.
I don't think it has to be a lot, you know, but just something that is going to soften those buildings a little on the freeway.
Okay, anything else within?
There is a typo on page seventeen, I'm sorry, seventy-two dash four, up at the top on A one, last sentence, native plants.
Yep. And also on three slopes, turf and high-water use plants.
Turf and high-water use.
Well, plans. Plan means. After a while, you type and you're, and just write plan.
And you do a word search and spell check and it's all good.
And after you read it once, you don't see it again. And watering times, are we going to leave that in there?
According to the standards in seventeen twenty-four, on page twenty-four dash four, for landscaping and open space minimum, in the industrial areas, it has to be ten percent. The way I read that chart, seventeen twenty-four dash three, for industrial landscaping, open space, minimum ten percent.
On twenty-four four. Twenty-four, twenty-four four.
But it seems like we want to have some consistency sort of going through the code that they say the same thing.
Right.
Do the rest of them have that in their development standard table?
Right. For, for the CC zone and the CR zone, it has to be five percent. We're actually requiring more in the industrial, ten percent, and.
Yeah, so that was a mistake. So we would correct that by adding a note saying that as determined by the permit.
Okay, so the ten percent will go away and it'll be as determined by the permit. Okay, I just want it consistent.
Good job.
Okay, we'll move on to secondary dwelling units. And here I wanted to give you an overview of some, there have been some big changes within this section of code. First is that we, within the new code, currently, secondary dwelling units are allowed in the R one zone as an administrative permit. Within the draft code, they are also included in the RM, the mixed-use village and the mixed-use neighborhood zones. They currently enter the RM zone, if you have a single-family home, you're subject to the R one standard, so you can get an accessory unit if you just have a single family on a RM parcel because you're subject to the R one code, which allows a secondary unit. But possible concerns and modifications here, I think it'd be wise to add a stipulation that you're allowed to have a secondary unit only in those situations where there is a single-family home, one single-family home on the property, to clarify that that's when it's applicable. And also within the mixed-use village, there really aren't very many lots that are five thousand square feet that would meet the minimum. And also because parking is such an issue within the mixed-use village and we've repeatedly heard from not to intensify uses within the village and also to consider parking, this is one that we, you may want, we may want to consider tonight not allowing the accessory dwellings in the mixed-use village. In the mixed-use village, you are allowed to have multifamily units typically on the second story, so there's a way in which if you have adequate parking, you can have multiple units, but allowing these accessory structures within the residential overlay could be problematic. So, and really not practical, there really are not lots that are five thousand square feet. Do we want to stop here and discuss that piece of it first, the zoning? That might be helpful before I get on to the next question.
Well, I like the two possible modifications. I think they make sense.
One, two.
There, okay.
Okay. Next, the review process. Currently, if an application complies, it's an administrative permit that's issued through a building permit. If it does not meet the standards, we require a planning commission review of a design permit. Within the new code, there's an additional standard that it just requires a conditional use permit, so it's in the design permit. So you'd have to make the findings that for mitigation for conditional use within the new process. The design requirements, currently, the standards can be deviated from within the code with that design permit, as I mentioned previously. Within the new code, it specifies that there are three items that you cannot deviate from, one being the minimum lot size of five thousand square feet, the second that there's required to have a single-family primary residence on the site, and the third is that there's only one allowed per parcel. So right now, you could go to the planning commission and ask for deviation from all the standards within accessories and, and now we're limiting so that these three, there's no way to ask for deviation. Next, with under the development standards, a change was during the issues and options that we talked about was to allow two-story, two-stories for a secondary dwelling unit. Still, they're, they're limited to the square footage that's allowed per unit, but it could go up to two stories and up to twenty-two feet. There's a unique setback for two-story buildings, that there's a five-foot interior side yard setback and then a ten-foot rear yard setback. Currently, the setback is eight feet. Something to note is that for a single-story secondary dwelling unit, the rear yard currently is eight feet and that got decreased to five feet in the code. This was something that we talked at length with the city council about and there was a long discussion about, well, this, this eight feet of space between the accessory, I'm sorry, the secondary dwelling unit and the fence is really wasted space, let's try to decrease that when it's only a single story, so that there's not this gap. So allowing it to come closer to the rear yard property line. And then for parking, the current code requires, it's, parking's based on the combined floor area with the primary residence, so once you go over a threshold, you're required to provide more parking spaces. That is not changed within the draft code, it's the same. And then previous, our existing code today has a deed restriction that the owner has to either occupy the primary residence or the secondary unit. That has been removed due to our conversations during the issues and options and support for removing. So that, you could have two rental units essentially with the primary unit and the secondary. The owner no longer would have to reside on site. So with that.
No, I think we have someone.
There's a few things to talk about if.
We have anyone in the public that would like to talk? We got your E, we got your letter, so.
It should be the same.
Okay. We did.
Thank you. Can I say?
Sure.
My name is Richard Lippi. I live on Monterey Avenue. I've been in construction trades for about fifty-four years and the last time I went through the International Building Code, I think it was two thousand and seven, so it's been a while. But when I see these slides and I hear the conversation, it doesn't sound like we're looking at the driving forces behind the building code, which is health and safety, the fire code, and police protection. Those are the basic things. And, you know, when setbacks are changed from eight feet to five feet, I think, what if there's a fire? What's going to be the effect of having a unit on fire that's only, you know, five feet away from the next structure or maybe ten feet away versus sixteen feet? And the same thing with fences. When we're talking about fence heights, what about police protection? You know, what about when the police have to scale a fence? What about fire when they, you know, have to scale a fence? I know that, I'm, I'm pretty sure, and it's been ten years, but fence heights and setbacks have a lot to do with the fire code and, you know, it has to do with experience. So that's just, that's just my comment. That's what I'm thinking of when all this conversation's going on. Thank you.
Anybody want to?
Well, I think the, I'm not sure I'm in favor of the reduction of the back, the rear yard setback change anyway, but even if it were five feet, it's not five feet from the other structure, it's five plus whatever their rear yard setback is. And our side yard setbacks are only three. And so that we've got three and three and we've got six there, so the rear is still well within the Fire Marshal's code. I don't think that's a concern. So I, you know, I'm feeling pretty comfortable about that. I'm not sure I feel comfortable about reducing it, but.
Well, why, why don't we sort of go through?
Go through the issues.
There's one before that, isn't there?
Yeah. Do we need to go back one?
Because I have some question about that.
So, okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to get the process here. So if you meet all the requirements for a secondary dwelling unit, then you get an administrative permit. Okay, that's easy. If you don't meet the requirements, then you come in for a conditional use permit and how, what are the standards that we apply at that point?
We would look at the development standards within the code, so it would be design and development standards within this section. So minimum lot size, there's height standards, unit size, maximum floor area. We'd go through all the.
Some of those are not being met or else they get an administrative permit, right?
Right.
And so they, if they can't meet some of those, then they come in and convince us that it's still, there's merit for the project still.
Yeah.
And the commission would need to make the findings in section O five oh.
Okay.
So can I ask one other question? For the administrative permit, what kind of public noticing is there?
There is no.
None?
Because I do think that for neighborhoods, you know, it, it is an issue for them going in and neighbors at least need the opportunity to come and, you know.
But if they meet the requirements, the only thing they could argue is that there's, you know, the measurement's wrong or.
And they don't, they don't have that today. Today, if you have, if you install a secondary grand unit or a secondary dwelling unit that works and meets the, the requirements, there's no notice to neighbors.
But I think just like, you know, we learned with sort of the conceptual review, there's no notice requirements in that. And, you know, our town is pretty small and people are pretty close together. It seems like there ought to be something in that administrative permit process where, you know, notices go out to the neighbors and they have ten days to, you know, contact or do something so they know what's going on or happening in their neighborhood. Particularly, I mean, I'm, I'm going to argue that we need to have another parking space for these units, but if you're not going to have a parking space for those units and they go in somewhere that's already, you know, quite congested, I mean, I think it's a disservice to our community and our, you know, neighborhoods to.
I don't see, if there's no discretion, it's like we don't give people notice that you're coming in for a building permit. Because there's no discretion as to the issuance of permit, I don't see the point of notice.
Yeah, so if I could add a few points to this discussion, so the city is constrained with what it can do with second units by state law.
Right.
And one of the things that state law says is that the approval of a second unit consistent with specified standards needs to be a ministerial action. And it also says that it needs to treat that ministerial action the same way that it treats other similar ministerial action. So I think it would be questionable in my mind whether or not the city could require public noticing for this type of ministerial action when it's not requiring noticing for other similar ministerial actions.
What would be a similar ministerial action?
Fence permit.
Any other, basically?
Yeah, kind of our real easy over-the-counter for building permits.
Right.
Business license.
Staff level sign.
So state law sets up the size, that if they're under a certain size, then they have to be administrative permit. Did they talk about setbacks or?
I would need to look at the statute and get back to you on that.
Well, I was going to wait to comment because I, because to me, it kind of ties in as it's on the next slide at the end. It's, we're, I think I'm probably in the minority here, but we agreed that the owner occupancy standard, because to me, that is really, helps drive that issue. If the owner's an occupant there, I think we have a lot higher opportunity to get the neighborhood input into the process and make sure that.
I, I agree.
That standard. So I, I think I'm probably in the minority, but I, I don't agree with the owner having it both being rentals.
I think it should be owner occupied.
I remember having this discussion and going through the whole discussion, but I can't remember why we decided.
It was the fellow who came in from Heritage Court.
Right.
Who said that he's going to leave the country for a year and he wanted to rent his house and he has a secondary dwelling unit, so he couldn't rent his house and that was going to be a hardship on him. And it seems to me that we could require having an owner live there and, you know, have some provision that, you know, someone could come and ask for an exemption for, you know, up to a period of time, like a year, because there was going to be some hardship like that. And then it would, you know, if, if that would work, you're not saying, you know, it's, it just seems like.
Well, what bothers me about it, and I remember that now, that it's kind of a restraint on alienation of the property when you own a property that has a secondary unit and you want to put it on the market and now your only buyers can be owner-occupied buyers.
But I think that's, the, the idea is that we don't want them both to be rental units because, I mean, for me, adding a secondary dwelling unit into an existing single-family neighborhood is, it, it does. neighborhood is, it does intensify the use in the, in the neighborhood. And it's a privilege that not all houses get to have. And so I could, um...
I guess I buy into the idea that owner occupied does create some degree of stability or...
Oversight.
Yeah, on the property. As a generalization, that's not always true.
Right.
Yeah, but, so maybe this is one opportunity to...
Well, interesting, the Heritage Court issue, right after that, we, we had that discussion, the units went for sale, and I was talking to a realtor who was, they were waiting on our decision because they thought they could get more money as a double income rental unit, and sure enough, it went for sale soon as we made our, you know, had that discussion, so it's one of those, it goes either way, I guess.
But I like Susan's thought on having an exception available for a specific and having it limited in time.
Hardships or...
So then that wouldn't, it wouldn't flip open and say, okay, well, owner doesn't have to live here. It's like, well, if you prove to us you have a hardship, then the owner doesn't have to live here for a year, or...
Maximum period.
Yeah, maximum period.
How, how does that affect our staff, like, how does that, I mean, we've had that in place before where it had to be owner occupied, but is that...
I think it's perfectly workable. I think it could be a good compromise. I think, my recollection was, there was some divided opinions, both of the commission and the council on that issue. That might be a good middle ground that everybody could agree to. It would be another step, if somebody wants to do the exception, to come in and, you know, presumably, we'd have some permitting process, but I don't think it would happen that often, so it'd be a big workload item or anything.
You know, a lot of what I've been hearing in this community over the last couple of months, or a month, you know, with Vision Capitola, is that people want, you know, less impact, they want less development, they want, you know, they are, they're kind of up to here with overdevelopment. It doesn't seem like anybody's asking for more development here. So I think there's, there's, there's a wave going with that kind of thing, and it would not be received poorly by the majority of our citizens.
So if we can live with going with owner occupied in the primary or secondary unit with the exception for hardship, then I also think that, you know, parking is something that needs to be considered, because again, hearing from a lot of people, you know, parking is an issue in an awful lot of neighborhoods, and it makes some sense to...
But they have that in there, they have to meet the parking requirement of the aggregate square footage.
Right, but that really, I mean, as, as Nell's, no, it really doesn't address the fact that you have two households, and it's not like you have children living in your, you know, one of your bedrooms. This is a whole different, this is like you said, a couple, or a student, or somebody who's got their own car, and that's another car or two added to your neighborhood.
I think it's size limitations.
You know, I, I don't see the problem of requiring, you know, a parking space that's going to be dedicated to that secondary dwelling.
Does the state prohibit that? I don't know.
I don't, I don't think the state prohibits that.
So the state doesn't prohibit that?
Parking? They don't address parking, so we're talking about adding one parking space for the secondary unit, and then whatever the primary unit requires, it requires.
Right.
And still, right. But we would still consider the aggregate.
No, we don't, no, no.
No, well, that's a, that's...
I, I'm thinking both, I'm thinking...
Well, it's always going to be more if you add one whole parking space for the secondary unit.
Right.
Is it going to be the same or more?
The same or more, yeah.
Yeah.
It sounds like it's doable. I think the effect would be that a lot of lots that could currently develop second units would no longer be able to. Just roughing it out in my head of how many small lots we have that can't meet their parking today, the current parking standards, and that's okay if we go that direction, I just want to point it out.
Well, I think that's a really good way to control a lot of growth that the state doesn't want us to be able to control, too.
And a lot of the lots that are five thousand or larger, you know, or in neighborhoods where people already have a two-car garage and two parking in front, so they're going to be able to meet the parking requirement because they have four spaces already. So I, I would like to require one space for the...
I'm good with that. I don't think you need to have to specify a space, I mean, in the case where you've got a two-car garage and two parking spaces, I don't think they have to specify that this is the tenant's spot.
No, no, we're just talking about the number of parking spaces.
Number of parking space, right.
Right, got it.
All right.
Okay.
Good. I think it took us backwards.
So do we want to talk about setbacks? Gail said she had some concern about going from eight feet to five feet. How do you feel about it?
You know, and if it's not going to pass at the council, I'm not interested in spending our time talking about it tonight.
I'll clarify that they wanted to revisit this when the ordinance was drafted. So they, it was split, it was two-two at the time of, should we decrease it or not? So I think they would...
Yeah, I, I'm not in favor of de- of decreasing that.
I'd like to see, personally, I think eight feet is a space back there that, you know, big enough people can walk around, they can put a small garden, they, they can do things with that space. When you have a five-foot space, to me, then you are sort of creating a, a no man's land. So I sort of see it...
Here's a good way to look at that, and that is that the secondary dwelling unit gets a backyard with eight feet. And I would imagine that most people who, who share those, that property are going to want a little bit of privacy and not want to share that middle ground. So to me, it makes more sense to have something in back, so they have their own backyard as well.
So I can go either way on this one, but I think we need to be careful about assuming what everybody wants and what they, they think. I have an issue with it facing the alley. And I know that we can assume that people would want that, but I know several people that live in little granny units, and they're really close friends with the people that live in the primary unit. And so the granny unit is set back, and it's a, more of a shared yard in front, and I don't have a problem with five feet, because in a, in a single-family home, you're three feet from the, you know, you've got the, on the side setback, it's, it's much tighter than that. So I, I don't understand why we would want eight feet.
So let's go back and remember that we have two options for someone who wants to put in a secondary dwelling unit. One is they can meet all the requirements, let's say we have an eight-foot requirement, they can, and they can get administrative permit. But if they don't meet all the requirements, they can still get a permit, they just need to get a conditional use permit, and they can say it's only six and a half feet, but in this particular situation, it works well.
And, and I think I'm good with that, you know, if you look at the situation along the rail corridor, there's a right-of-way there, so like in my backyard, I have an extra ten feet that doesn't belong to me, but, so I would be eighteen feet away from my back fence. So, you know, there are exceptions to that where you could go through that process, so I think that, that's, to me, it leaves that flexibility in there.
So if we leave the flexibility, so it's not going to require a variance for them to be closer, then that works for me. Issuing variances just gets to be such a nasty...
Variances are very strict, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. What about two stories? Yeah. Are we all okay with two stories?
I, I don't have an issue with two stories, and my only consideration note I wrote was the height, it should be consistent with the primary structure, allow that. So if you look at some of these homes that, they're probably considered historical on grand, or in that area where they have separate detached garages, many of them share the same architectural, of roof lines and stuff, so I, you know, allow, I guess you could always come in and ask for that exception, but it should be consistent with the building.
Yeah. I get to be a little uncomfortable with two-story ones going in, in a neighborhood with no one knowing that they're going, you know, if that can be an administrative permit. Seems to me if you're going to build a two-story structure that's, you know, eight feet from the property line, then maybe that should require some sort of permit, so the neighbors at least know what's going on, so they can see if they're going to have windows looking down in their backyard. I mean, suddenly, you're starting to deal with a lot of privacy issues. So I'm wondering if the two-story ones can require more than the administrative permit.
Let's make two-story only with the CUP?
I, I think that's a good suggestion.
And that's legal? Let us do that?
Right.
I think we could set the standards from what I understand, and so that would work.
Good.
Okay, I think we've got some clear direction. Thank you.
It sets it out easy.
Yes. Okay, so this, during, we're going to move into parking now. In parking, there's quite a few items up for discussion this evening. We started with parking back in March on our March third meeting, so a couple of these are repeats, but they were, this first one, there was a request to talk about the mixed-use village and the mixed-use neighborhood and bring it back for discussion at Planning Commission. So just a reminder that within the mixed-use village, we kept all the standards as they are today, with the change in the definition for takeout restaurant, in which we've set a new limit of the square footage rather than counting chairs. Within the mixed-use neighborhood, this is the part that you wanted us to bring it back for further discussion. There, the standards were less stringent, a lot were one per four hundred square feet, and the reasoning for this is that the mixed-use neighborhoods are typically back up to residential neighborhoods in which more people could walk to the use, and so the thought was, you won't need as many parking spaces. Of course, that can be, that's not always the case when you have a very popular restaurant in the mixed-use neighborhood, or very popular salon, or, you know, something that gets a lot of traffic. But anyway, so that was the thought behind why the numbers are less stringent in the mixed-use neighborhood, and they're less stringent than today's code of, I think it's one per three hundred square feet for retail and restaurants and cafes. So with that, we'll have discussion and...
So I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not comfortable going to the four hundred square feet, I think that is too big of a change for, you know, everything in the MUN. You know, I mean, just, if you have a nail salon where people are going to get pedicures, they're not walking there and they're not walking home. There, I mean, there are a lot of, and I think for the businesses to be successful on, you know, Capitola Avenue going up, or Capitola Road, they're going to need more business than people walking there. So I can see making some change, you know, maybe going to like three hundred feet, but I think going to four hundred feet is just too big of a change. I'm okay with that.
I think we had that discussion, right? We were at three hundred?
Yeah, so I, so I thought we had decided on being at three hundred.
I'm...
And within this one, it would just, we would take the mixed-use neighborhood and just add it to the, the other requirements for the other zoning districts. We would just keep the village separate then, because essentially, they'll be held to the same standard as the regional commercial and the community commercial, which is one per three hundred.
Right, and we are going to change, like for restaurants and cafes, it's not going to be three hundred, it's going to be the same as we have for the, in the community commercial and the CR zone.
Mm-hmm.
Because I don't think you can have a restaurant and have, you know, in the village, we're saying that you've got to have, you know, one per sixty square feet of dining and one for two hundred and forty square feet of other. Seems like, since we have a separate restaurant standard, other places, we should have it in this neighborhood.
Well, we have a really successful restaurant right across the street here. How big is it? Do you know, off the top of your head?
Three, two or three hundred square, three hundred square feet. It's pretty small.
But it's, and it's very unique in that, you know, it's right across from the parking lot, Lower Pacific Gold Parking, the one on the corner.
Yeah.
And that restaurant may be sort of successful right now. If you talk to the owner, I don't think he feels like it's being...
He actually told me it's really good, yeah.
And, but hasn't he cut down? He's only now open Wednesday through Sunday, or there's, they've just reduced it by one more day.
Yeah, I just had a talk with them a couple weeks ago, he said business is great, so...
So I, I just...
And, and this was also during issues and options, we talked about creating different parking standards for different zones. So this is our effort towards that, but if it seems like this really belongs to be the same as the CC and the CR, that's the direction of going.
So what are the CC and CR standards for restaurants?
For a restaurant, it is one per sixty square feet of floor area for dining, and then one per three hundred square feet for all other floor areas. So your kitchen, your back, so it's just dropping that four hundred to three hundred.
Right. So that ma- that makes sense to me.
You know, none of these numbers make sense to me, frankly. I've been dealing with them for a long time, with a restaurant, you know, and it's like they're, they just seem so arbitrary. I don't really know where we came up with them, and we keep jiddling with them, and to me, you just, it's just very hard for me to understand how that is the way you, because every business is so unique, and they're not going to treat those sixty square feet, or those two hundred, or three hundred square feet, in, in anywhere near the same way. And so I don't, it just all feels, I don't feel like I'm even qualified to...
No, it's very arbitrary.
Plus, there are no spaces in the village anyway, so the whole thing is just like a fantasy.
But you, but you have to have some standards.
But I think the parking study that the local, or LCP is based on, is based on numbers out of here to say how many parking spots we need for the village, so...
It's all tied in.
And it's very arbitrary to me, I agree.
So, so let's... I don't know whether we began, we began this process years ago with actual industry standards, or, or, or government standards from somewhere else, or where did we get our baseline figures?
I don't know where the baselines came, but I, I can tell you that the standards, particularly for the village, are significantly more conservative than industry standards.
Right, I do know that.
They're getting more liberal in a lot of jurisdictions.
They are.
They're loosening the parking standards.
But I don't know whether, whether they'll let us loosen them, but I think we should loosen them, too.
But it, it isn't an, an exact science. I mean, you know, every business is different, you try to apply it the best you can, and if you ask ten different traffic engineers, come up with a parking study, they probably each come out with a little different result, so...
So I like the idea of just having two, that we've got the village, because people have said they want to keep that the same, and then make the MUN the same as the other commercial zoning district sent down, which are the CC and the CR.
Is anyone opposed to that suggestion?
So how would, let's go back and say, how does that change it? Because we talked about neighborhood mixed use at three hundred for retail.
So retail would be one per three hundred, and that would essentially be the same as what we require for all other zoning districts, so we would just, if we decreased all the four hundreds to three hundreds, it wouldn't make sense to have it listed in this table. It should just be part of the required onsite parking for all other districts, because it would mirror the other districts.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
What about the bars and lounges at seventy-five? Is that also a mirror?
We said sixty, I have sixty written down.
One per seventy-five, um, let's see. I think it's seventy-five and the other zoning district.
So I wrote down sixty, so...
Yeah, it's right here. Yeah, so that would...
We had that discussion about...
Be more stringent, one per sixty?
Yeah. What does it mean for dining under bars and lounges? A floor area for dining? It's not floor area for drinking?
I like to think paradise is a good example.
What about just something that is just a bar?
Like a wine bar, like wine bar?
Right.
That would be classified as an area where you sit down and you're, that would be part of the dining.
Right, it'd be considered dining.
But the area behind the bar would be all other floor.
Right, right. So dining or drinking, or, I don't know, I don't...
Well, I don't know what to do about it, but I'm still not comfortable with the village having this set of requirements that apply to very, very, very few establishments in the village. The vast majority are grandfathered in with no parking spaces. There are almost no new improvements that comply with any standards we put up there or can comply until we have some kind of INLU or something. I mean, it's, it all just seems unreal to me.
I don't think a lot of them are grandfathered in with none, because I think a lot of them have been, have done remodels and changed owners and done lots of things, and they are, they, we've used the current...
Where are their parking spaces?
Well, it's, it's this bag.
No, no, I, I...
That's nonsense, that business about...
I know, I agree.
Virtual parking spaces that came out of the coastal commission thing is total nonsense.
It is, but, and... It is, but, and yet, we're still obliged to do it.
Well, let's say 60 virtual square feet of dining, then.
So, I have a suggestion, because I do think, I don't know, it was at some council meeting, and I think it was Councilmember Tremini that brought up the idea that maybe we could look at changing the parking standards down in the village a bit, which would allow some people some additional opportunities. And the example I came up with when I was thinking about it was, you know, the Italian restaurant in the mercantile often comes up, and if you change the parking standard, say, to 300 feet instead of 240, then he would be able to use some additional space within the mercantile to make his restaurant slightly bigger. For a business like Paradise, which, you know, is its own individual building, changing that standard really doesn't allow them to add anymore, cause they're pretty much using all of the space that they have. And I think it would be helpful for me if we had the staff look at that and say, if you change it to 280, this is, give us some examples, this is what could happen. If you change it to 300, this is an example of, you know, what could happen. So, we have some numbers like we did when we started talking about lots on Capitola Avenue, rather than just talking about it in, with, with no context. Would it, would it be possible to do that, and then we could come back and revisit this issue and see if it makes some sense?
That, and where are we with the coastal, I mean, what's, what is the coastal commission actually going to impose on us when this thing goes to them? I mean, I, you know, I, we need to know, are they going to say, you need to do the same thing that you've always been doing, you know, or are we just...
Yeah, that's, that's the, that was in that old study, yeah. So, so I, I just think, because I do think for some smaller restaurants and stuff, changing the standards could allow them to do a little more good...
Yeah, it's never made any sense to me that lack of parking spaces down there prevents that little Italian restaurant from putting, you know, three more tables out in the evening when the mercantile is all closed and using some of that space. It's never made sense to me, because people at that point really are walking there. Either they're walking from the parking lot that they've been parked in all day long, or they're walking from the neighborhoods to go have dinner, and...
I think the big fear for a lot of people, and I've, I've heard this a lot recently, is they don't wanna see a bunch more new restaurants going in the village. They don't wanna see the village become just an eating place. They want it to, you know, continue to be a mix of, you know, reten, and there's some people, you know, I think you would say, oh, the more restaurants, the better, but I think they're, if you're gonna keep it a village, you're gonna keep it mixed-use, then you don't want it to be all restaurants, and clearly, they're the moneymakers. If you serve alcohol, you're making money.
Well, and I agree, they shouldn't all be restaurants, but I know there used to be a bistro down there that, when it went out of business and, and closed down, nobody could put a restaurant back in that building, because there wasn't enough parking. And I think, you know, and...
That doesn't make sense to me.
And it was, so Margaritaville just reopened, right? New ownership. My understanding is that her tables are based on this parking number here. She can't add new, other tables, is that not true? Or she can add more tables if she wants?
Well, once we go to this standard, she can add more tables, cause we won't be counting tables and chairs anymore, which was a nightmare, I think, for staff and anyone who had to deal with that.
But that's the current, that's the current operating...
Well, I, I think the only ones that are subject to the, the chair rule, the six-seat chair rule, are the takeout establishments, so we're gonna change that, or at least it looks like we're gonna change it, and I think it's a 300-foot allowance, so that'll help a lot of those smaller ones where, you know, they add a seventh or eighth table, it's okay, we're not, you know, going out there to enforce. In response to the question about the research, certainly, we, we can try to, you know, take a couple of numbers, just give you an idea of the change that would affect. In response to the coastal commission question, we haven't got their parking comments yet. However, if they came back and said, no, you have to keep it exactly the same, I would push back hard, because I, I think it's safe to assume we probably have the most restrictive parking standards in the area. I don't, I know Santa Cruzes aren't as restrictive as ours, so I don't know how they could require us to have more strict standards.
They've always been so hard on us with that.
I would be surprised if they didn't allow some latitude there, particularly, you know, since our last LCP update, we built two parking lots over here, so...
I'd also like to add to the conversation, in, if you go to the beginning of the chapter, the 76, the second page, it's under replacing existing uses, number one is mixed-use village zoning district, A talks about for residential, but B on page two, this is really the limitation that even in the change that Commissioner Westman has suggested, this would trump that right now, that in all other changes of use in the village mixed-use zoning district, additional parking is required to accommodate the incremental intensification of the new use. Additional parking is not required to remedy parking deficiencies existing prior to the change in use. So if you were to intensify the use or expand the use, at that point, it triggers the additional parking. So, for us to change the standard, if this is still in play, it won't matter. It's really, do we want to say that you cannot intensify a use without providing additional parking? Cause this is, it's in the existing code today, it's something that we've, you know, within residential, you're allowed to add 10% to a home before your parking is triggered. In the village, for commercial, we don't have that standard, it's, any additional is...
So, I'm thinking if we get the information about, you know, perhaps going to the 300 square feet, so it matches all of the other zoning districts, then we could deal with that issue the same way you do it in residential, by saying, you know, under this new standard, you could add up to, you know, 20% or 15% or, you know, I don't know what the number's going to be, you know, based on the, on the new standards.
Okay.
Does that make sense? You're looking at me confused.
No, I'm, I'm just trying to think of, in this scenario, in the mercantile, it makes perfect sense, is you're going down the street and you're looking at these multi-tenant buildings, like the new...
There are a lot of places, it won't help them out at all, because they're not gonna have more space to expand into anyway. You know, without building...
Right, yeah, like Petit Four is, that's being, coming in on Stockton right now, that new bakery, they're just about to...
And were you limited, how many seats he can have?
We did, it's limited to six seats. So, but in that scenario, he could expand, that's a multi-tenant building, so we could look at what that difference would be. But it's more of, at that point, I think, creating a bank as well, to say that, under the existing code, he was required to have five spaces, but then with the new code, that went down to four, so therefore, he can expand an additional 300 square feet, is what you're looking for.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
You know, I was just trying to, I mean, I think we, we hear loud and clear, people don't want a lot of expansion down. I'm just trying to come up with a way that there's a little flexibility for some of the existing businesses down there to, you know, shift around a little bit, not do a wholesale change where you're gonna have a bunch of new buildings being converted from retail to restaurants.
Well, I think this Petit Four is, is a great example of, we've limited him to six seats, he hasn't opened his doors yet, but, you know, if, if it's nice and people wanna have coffee and have a pastry or whatever, and they can't get in a, other nice crowded area, because they're overwhelmed, then why would we limit him to six seats? Let him put a couple extra tables in there and...
Right, but I think, cause he's a new takeout, cause he came in as a takeout business, if we're, we're changing our takeout rules, so we're not counting up to, we're not saying that you can only have six seats or less.
But in that example, if he wants to expand into the retail shop next door, we could look at doing a banking system in which, because the standard was changed, he could apply that...
I mean, I, I think, I think we need to look at it and figure it out, but I think we have to have some numbers to look at to make an informed decision.
I have lots of numbers here, I can give you a few.
There may be...
Those numbers, I don't...
They're all arbitrary, that's the whole problem.
Yeah, and particularly in that report.
Within...
But that's what everything, the local coastal plan, everything's based on this, so...
I, I don't think it is based on that.
Oh, good.
That plan, what was, that, that report, he's talking about the report.
2008, one.
Yeah, that was done long after the coastal regulations and everything was put in, yeah.
That was the parking study from 2008?
Yeah, this is 2008 study.
So, another suggestion that I'm just, I'm evolving in this, but within the replacing existing uses, when we talk about expanding a use, maybe there's a discussion of having an allowance, a set percentage, that you can expand within a building for an existing restaurant, as long as it's within the same structure. Because once you get into a banking system, I think there could be issues with just managing a banking system with...
I like the idea of having a fairly small, I mean, small percentage, you know...
That a restaurant could expand, and...
So, are we doing all this effort to change the number from 240 to 300? Is that what you're thinking?
That's sort of what I'm thinking.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I was on the same page.
Okay with it.
Okay, so we'll come back with the village discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. And we're going to move the mixed-use neighborhood into the other category.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and we have already discussed number 21, which is the secondary dwelling units. We're gonna add one parking space requirement for that. Discussion point number 22 is required off-site parking for historic structures in the village. This section of code exists today, and it's been carried over to the new code. I find it, it is confusing. It says that required parking for new development and intensified uses in the mixed-use village shall, shall be provided on sites outside of the village area. Spaces shall be within walking distance for the use of the shuttle system. Planning Commission may approve exceptions for, and it says, nonhistoric residential, so you can have onsite parking if you're not historic. There can be an exception for the Capitola Theater site in the mercantile, and also for FEMA. So, within this regulation, a historic home would have to have their parking off-site within a walkable distance, and this was raised, is this something we wanna keep in our code? And if there, and it was also, I think, Commissioner Westman discussed it, was, if there's adequate onsite parking, why wouldn't we allow them to have adequate onsite parking?
I guess, it, it seemed to me, my recollection was, that if somebody was going to rebuild a residential unit in the village, say on Cherry or in, in that residential overlay district, and they could include parking in their new plan, they decided, you know, they wanted to have parking at their home, shouldn't they be able to have parking at their home instead of having to provide parking outside the village? That didn't make sense to me, the way it was written.
I agree.
I agree.
That's not what I said?
No, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I mean, it just made no...
No, it doesn't make sense.
I agree as well. I would point out that this is a standard in the LCP, which we would have to fix to get it adopted in the land use plan. And I don't know if, if you know the history of, if that was a coastal commission imposition, or...
Well, we've allowed residential to rebuild down there and provide parking onsite, and it's never been, I mean, that new duplex that, the two units that went in not too long ago, they had garages, so, you know, we, we've allowed it, and I guess just ignored what was in the local coastal plan, but I think we should try and fix it if we can for residential uses. I get it for commercial uses that they want, but it, it didn't make sense to me for residential.
Okay, I'm seeing agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion 23 and 24, this is for large vehicle storage in the single family. One comment from Commissioner Westman was that we should require a width requirement. There's length and height, but no width. And then also from Commissioner Smith, concerned that the standard is too restrictive. So this is a new standard, it, we have a lot of calls that come in regarding code enforcement for RVs, boats, and campers, and it gets into different parts of the municipal code when people are living in them, or when they're stored and where they're stored, so we thought it would be appropriate to clarify in the zoning code where that can be done. In terms of the parking space, it's, it cannot happen in the required front or exterior side yard. The vehicle may not exceed 13 and a half feet in height or 25 feet in length, and then the finished material has to be concrete, asphalt, or semi-permeable pavers or similar, so... With that, we'll have discussion.
So, in a residential area, I think when, when people come in with a design review to, to do a, a build, it needs to be looked at on a, a case-by-case basis. Limiting it and restricting, this is how big your driveway can be, and this is how big your extra space can be, and this is what you can use your, your space for, that's not what Capitola has ever been. It's one of the reasons that a lot of people that I know have moved here, because it's not like a homeowners association with all of the absolute strict rules that you can and cannot do. And there are people of all levels that have RVs, boats, and, and campers that are not a problem, so it seemed to me when I read this, that we're, we're trying to be really restrictive to keep some specific problems from happening, and what we're doing is penalizing all of the non-problems by restricting them so that they can't, they can't happen. I don't know all of the calls that you get, but the ones, the complaints that I've heard about are the parking of a, of a boat or a truck with a big old tarp over it that's unsightly, and/or, you know, in, in really tight neighborhoods where it blocks visibility from the neighbor's driveway, so they have a hard time, you know, parking, getting in and out of their driveway. But trying to specify 13 and a half feet high, 25 feet in length, it's, it seems arbitrary and extremely limiting for no reason.
But this just says they may have that. It's, it's, they're not required to. It says, in addition to the required onsite parking spaces for single-family dwellings, one additional onsite parking or storage space may be provided.
But it may not be located in the front or exterior side setback areas, and it may be utilized only to store a vehicle that doesn't exceed those measurements.
Well, I see your point that Capitola doesn't wanna be too uniform and restrictive, but the other side of it is, is that we have small lots where a very tight community in terms of size, and I, the, the large vacation vehicles, I think have a big impact on a neighborhood, on a small, on a neighborhood where the houses, you know, the lots are only 40 by 80, and, so I...
And if you don't wanna park your vehicle here, you don't have to park your vehicle, you know?
Right, but if you do wanna park your vehicle here, and you have a space to park a 28-foot-long trailer, then you should be able to do that.
But not in your front yard.
What if you don't have any other yard to put it in?
Then it needs to go somewhere else.
It's a balancing.
That's a, it's a tough issue. I know this has been around for a while, this is, one of those, it's a, it's a tough challenge.
I mean, what, what we're creating is provision that, cause we're limiting how much of the lot can be used for parking, right? That happens in a different section, and we're saying, you, but if you want to, you can have more than what is normally allowed, if you have space on your property to do it, and you wanna park a large vehicle.
So, I haven't been reading our requirements that way. I've been reading them that you have to have at least this much parking on your lot, and I can't imagine that we would prevent, and I don't understand why we would want to prevent people from making additional off-street parking on their lot.
I don't think we would.
We're not, we're saying that you may...
They're just saying, in, within this, these side, these setbacks, we wouldn't want to. We're not saying, I mean, if they have enough room, and they can do it in other places, we're allowing that, but we're not... but we're not allowing it within setbacks.
I do know a lot of people put them on the exterior side of their, like boats and stuff, so that one I kind of, maybe, doesn't really make sense to me because a lot of people will park them, a boat behind a fence that's in their setback area. Mine happens to be actually in the front, but, so I could see.
I think size has something to do with it too, though, because if it's in the setback and it's a super hot.
No, I did, I understand.
RV, you know, and it's just this big monolith there, I.
I just think.
Whether you're the person with the vehicle or the person who's a neighbor next door.
Yeah, but when, when we got our RV, long story short, it was never supposed to be parked in the front yard. It was supposed to be parked in the, the side yard where I have gates and I could, you know, park. Well, long story short, it didn't fit. And it's, it was a huge investment and we kept it for a year off-site and only brought it over when we needed to load it and, and travel with it. And I went to my neighbors and I live across the street from a really expensive house in Capitola, and none of my neighbors had any problem with me parking my RV in my front yard. There is no place in Santa Cruz County that's safe to take an RV and park it.
Or cheap.
Well, forget the cheap part, but there's no place to do it, that you don't have to go over there and, and really work hard to maintain it. I trickle charge it, we use it all the time. It, it wasn't a problem for any of my neighbors. So for us to codify a restriction that says you can't do that regardless, I just, I think that it's overstepping.
So the only thing we're codifying is saying that you can't park it in the front yard or an exterior side yard on a corner lot.
Which is exactly the situation I'm in.
Right, I.
Rich, Rich is, he wrote that just for you, I think.
You know, I'm, we've already had this conversation. I was really hoping this wouldn't come here.
I thought of an exception we could write in, but.
We're planning commissioners.
No, you drive, you drive around Capitola, you see RVs, you see boats, there, there's.
I, I mean, I hear you. I, I, I agree with Ed. I think in these small neighborhoods.
And I hate to say that I'm for this, but I am for it. I mean, I don't think anybody wants to actually come out and say it, but I personally don't, don't like it. I don't like it in the community. I don't think it's.
The question I have, though, about it.
Most people want in this community either.
The question I have is exterior side setback, because often that's where people park, is along their house on.
Exterior side setback is only on a corner lot.
Oh, only, oh, I didn't see, I didn't read.
I mean, that, that's the definition for exterior side.
Oh, thank you for that indication.
Well, I mean, it, it could be broader than that as far as I'm concerned, because it does defeat some of the setback benefits of setbacks, which you have a great big recreational vehicle blocking your window and your light and your.
Right. Yeah. Well, I just think you both for a little bit.
I'm okay with it, the way it's written, sorry.
I am not okay with it. It is extremely not okay with me for it to be written that way. And the way that it's codified is not, it's, it's, at least tell me that it's limited to new development and you can't build a parking space, but I am not moving my RV.
We could write it that way. I don't think that's the way it's proposed.
I mean, I, I understand your situation's unique and I appreciate that. I, you know, I think what we have to do is sort of look at what we think is best for the community.
It's not just me, though, and I can go get a bunch of RV people to come down and, and let you know that.
I think there will, for those many people, there will be many, many more who are on the other side. I think there's probably RV people are in a minority here in Capitola and a lot of people complain about them who aren't RV owners.
Yeah, we.
Boat owners.
We just had that on my street as, as an issue. There's two of them that are long. One of them was always stored off-site except when they go on vacation, but the other one, the guy kept in his front yard and after some discussion with the neighbors, he agreed to put it in storage and so it no longer sits out in the front yard.
Well, if I had neighbors around me that had a problem with it, I would have kept it in storage and kept dealing with that, but I do not. My neighbors don't, it, it's not a problem for them. So for somebody on the other side of town to have a problem, and that, that's what I meant when I said, I think we're restricting people that aren't a problem because there are problems in other neighborhoods.
What if one of your neighbors sells it to someone who does have a problem, then do you move it?
Yeah, that's a question, then what happens when?
You know, I'd have to have a conversation. I'm, I'm a good neighbor, so probably.
What happens if your neighbors are trying to be good neighbors too and they really do mind it, but they want to be nice and, and they're willing to, you know?
I have a better relationship with my neighbors than that. I mean, I personally do, but I just think we're, we're. If you want, if you want to be Carmel, move to Carmel. If you want to be, you know, Saratoga, move to Saratoga, but I don't think turning.
I don't think anybody wants to be Carmel.
I don't think this is like a.
I don't think they do either.
Us versus you type. I understand your situation, but it's not, I don't think it's like a us versus you issue here. I think we, we differ on, I, I don't think that the neighbors, the community of Capitola really would like all their neighbors, while yours may give an exception. My neighborhood didn't like it and, and so our neighbors complied and moved. So to have it based on what your neighbors think about you for the whole community opens us up to trying to do enforcement in those areas that.
No, what we've got is, we've got today, no, no regulation. And what we're putting in is a very restrictive regulation. So all I'm saying is that before, we're trying to regulate.
We, we, we regulate what goes on in front yards all the time. We have landscaping requirements in front yards. We regulate how wide somebody's driveway can be in the front yard. I mean, we, we already regulate front yards.
We haven't done that in the past, though.
Well, I, I think that we have, we do regulate what front yards can be used for. I think we regulate and say they're not supposed to be for parking. You know, we, we have regulated that in the past. And I think with a lot of situations in Capitola, those kinds of regulations often only get enforced on a complete kind of basis and, you know, obviously. So I, I think it makes some sense to put in language like we have here that makes provisions for someone if they want to put in an additional parking space for their recreational vehicle on their lot and they have room to do that. So, you know, I'm comfortable with what's here.
Just one thing you could consider is a CUP, maybe a term-limited CUP, where somebody has to come back every, you know, year, two years to renew it. I, just throw it out there.
I think I've said my piece. I'm not going to say it again.
So.
Go ahead.
Well, do you want me, do you want to talk about consensus on where we're at here?
That's what I was gonna look for, is I, I think I've heard from the majority of you that you'd like to keep the standard in.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard. This is hard, this is a hard.
It's a hard conversation. Okay, so there's five more subparts, or we're at number twenty-five. And there's four more discussion points within the parking section of the code. And that was, our goal tonight was to get through parking and loading. I do have some signed standards, but I think by nine o'clock, we'll hopefully have gotten through these next four. Okay, so for discussion twenty-five, both Commissioners Newman and Commissioner Welch brought up the exclusion to residential from the shared parking. So within shared parking, when you do a shared parking study, it excludes, the parking will be shared by non-residential land uses only, so this is, there is a request to discuss because this is too rigid in their perspective.
I, I'm the one who probably brought it up about having, not having residential share, be in the shared parking. And the reason I do that is because in all the situations where I've worked and I've experienced this, if you have commercial and you have residential, there ends up being conflicts because of the time change. You have to have a commercial that's gonna close at five o'clock or, you know, so the residence thing and then come home and take over the parking places. And it gets to be a constant battle back and forth. I don't have any difficulty with, like, for office uses, if you have shared residential and commercial parking, that, that seems to not create the same conflicts that you get when you're trying to share it with, you know, commercial or movie theaters or other uses that are gonna continue to operate into the night.
So my reason for not wanting that in is I, I've seen projects where they have had commercial and residential shared usage. And I, I think that the provision without that is flexible enough that when a specific proposal comes in, the planning commission can look at the parameters that are set up for that shared parking proposal. There'll be times and, you know, if it works, it works. If it's not, then it's denied.
And I think my comment on that was that it should include a parking study, that maybe we are involved in that process of, of the vendor so that we know we're getting the, the result that's not being biased, so.
As long as it's not the people who did the parking study for the Mercantile.
That's why I said, the zone that we would have, say, in the vendor, so.
Yeah, I can, I can live with that.
So what are you proposing to change it, so that its parking can be shared by all land uses?
Just take out D one.
And, and replace it with the requirement for a parking study? Well, that was my thought. I don't know what anyone else thinks, but.
And I think it has to be clear that it's a parking study.
A parking study that the city controls.
Yeah, the city takes in a deposit and has the study done.
Doesn't two already require it?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
But I think clarifying in two, that it's city administers it. Okay.
Go back with a little, little bit to C, off-site parking. Did you catch the typo in number two? Off, off-site instead of onsite?
Off-site, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Okay, the next is to add standards for a parking study. We discussed this during the March third hearing and within the shared parking in the mixed-use neighborhood and mixed-use village, there was a request to add a twenty-five percent maximum to any shared parking study in those areas. Also, within the ones that do exist in the code currently, the draft code is for a transportation demand management plan. There's a fifteen percent max for fifteen percent decent required parking. Transit center, ten percent max for decrease in parking.
What happens if there are no buses that go to the transit center?
Yeah, we'll talk about the transit center again this evening.
Okay.
After that last one, but we, we tabled that. So here, one other thing I wanted to bring up is that mixed-use village, when I, I actually took this section of code to the Traffic and Circulation Committee and their recommendation was for the village not to include any decrease and for any, anything related to village parking throughout this chapter, that there not be allowed, like, studies that would decrease the parking standards, that every development in the village should be tied to the actual parking standard without any allowance for decreases, so.
So these would apply to areas outside the village?
These, the Transportation Demand Management Plan would apply citywide, but we could exclude that from the village. The transit center would be citywide, most likely at the mall. And then the shared parking would just be in the, we'd set a new cap for the mixed-use neighborhood and then if directed tonight, we could remove that twenty-five percent allowance for the village. So the example there would be like the Mercantile coming in and instead of the, say, forty-five percent reduction they were looking for, there'd be, the maximum that they could ask for would be a twenty-five percent max reduction in required parking.
So the Parking and Traffic Commission wanted there to be no exceptions in the village. You couldn't reduce the parking based on a parking study. But you could provide the parking off-site somewhere else. I mean, there's no requirement that the parking be provided on the site.
Yeah, for the onsite parking alternatives, I think we would have a note that this does not apply to the village, except for those circumstances such as the valet parking, it would be clear that that would apply to the village.
So what do other people think about that?
Yeah. I, you know, we, we're hearing a lot about, you know, parking problems in the village. Lots about that. People are fed up with it. So I think the, the Parking Committee has the right idea.
Was the recommendation exclusive to the village or did it include the neighborhood mixed-use zones as well?
Exclusive to the village. I could go along with their recommendation.
Yeah. I mean, what are we having for if we don't go along with their recommendations?
So does that just delete the village from the reductions and leave the rest of it the same?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next is the Transit Center credit. So previously, we talked about this during the March third meeting. The planning commission can reduce up to ten percent for non-residential or multifamily development projects within four hundred feet of the regional transit center. During the meeting, there was a discussion on, let's limit this to the mall property only. When we looked at the radius from the transit center, it really would be limited to the mall property only. Since then, as we know, the mall has been acquired. And we've also, during our Monday night meeting, we talked about doing a specific plan for the mall in which this would, I think a parking study would be included in that as well as looking at traffic and circulation. So our suggestion would either be just to remove this because it will be looked at holistically during that specific plan. So it's not really necessary or.
It doesn't matter either way to me because it's.
Yeah, I think we ought to remove it and deal, because I think we have to deal with the mall as a unique piece of property and deal with that with the specific plans. It doesn't make sense to have it in here.
I'm going to go back.
Agreed. Okay. And pedestrian access, within the, towards the end of this, the parking section. Parking lots with thirty or more spaces shall include a pedestrian walkways compliant with ADA. And then it also requires that the design shall be visible and distinguished from parking and circulation through striping, contrasting pavement, paving materials, et cetera. Commissioner Westman brought this up and had concern of was, is this standard applicable to the village? And I think the specific example would be the Mercantile.
Right.
So if, if the Mercantile were to redevelop, they'd be held to the standard that there'd be pedestrian walkways that are compliant with ADA throughout the parking lot area and the design would be visible and distinguished and the circuit, for the circulation as well.
Yeah, it's fine with me to require it. I just wanted to make certain we knew what we were doing.
In fact, it's a flat, a fairly flat site, makes it a little less onerous in this situation.
There's support to keep that?
Uh huh.
Okay. Well, we've made it through the items that we were hoping to make it through tonight. I do have.
Additional one before we leave the parking, if that's okay?
Great.
And this came up because of an issue that somebody else ran across, so I just wanted to bring it up. Has to do with tandem spaces and whether or not tandem spaces should be the full size or if there should be some reduced size for tandem spaces. I think our normal is, how many feet for a parking place?
What page are you on?
This is a.
Not in, it's not in.
Not in there, not in there. This is an issue that my uncle, who's actually a, a big real estate guy in Hawaii, recently tripped over in tandem parking designs, where you have any kind of a development that has tandem parking to meet its parking requirements. And are those tandem spaces the same size as a full space? As opposed to having some reduction because they're tandem?
Aren't ours eighteen?
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen.
Nine by eighteen.
And in garages, we require nine by twelve.
Ten by twenty.
Nine by twenty. Seven, they're already.
And the.
Sidewalks, yep, 10 by 18.
So within a garage where you have a standard spot is 20 feet. If you have a tandem spot, is it then 40 feet in length or is it 36 feet in length for that two-car tandem spot? Then they ran into some legal issues in the transferring of, you know, selling of property and people moving their spaces around. Because they were selling them as tandem spots, but the, the tandem spots were not technically long enough to be two tandem spots. And we don't specify in any of our standards, any difference between the 20 feet versus 18 feet for a tandem spot versus, you know, a regular spot.
I could live with specifying 18 feet for tandem spots, each one being 18 feet.
I could live with that. I just think that we should consider specifying it. For the tandem spot.
So my one last point is the very last sentence in the parking ordinance. So that will get, are we going to just leave that in there or deal with the Coastal Commission?
The Parking Shuttle Program?
Right, because I think there is some debate. It says parking for the free summer bus shuttle program shall be provided in a remote lot. And it's, you know, the free summer, is, is it the bus that's free? Is it the parking that's free?
Is it the summer that's free?
Summer.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the way it's always been applied in Capitola is it's a free shuttle and parking can be charged. And I think that was the issue that they wanted to also make the parking free and we walked away from the table.
Because I don't think we want to make the parking free.
No, right. It'd eliminate our main revenue source for adding additional parking.
Right.
We've already cut down our parking violations and tickets.
Okay.
Very good.
That's probably enough for tonight. So are we going to talk about dates?
Yes. Got a slide for you? Okay, are.
A motion for.
So this, this should be continued to the May 5th. We have one item for the May 5th hearing, but we'll continue the zoning code on the May 5th. During the May 5th meeting, then we can.
Right.
Do you want to make that motion now or have the discussion on?
Don't we do that at the end of our?
Yeah, we'll do that at the end. Okay, so for May, I've, in this slide, I show stars on our available dates for May meetings. And during the last meeting, we began the discussion of availability, but hopefully tonight we can work out the details.
I, I could do any of those dates that you have, the stars up there. It's just that if it's on a Monday night, I really can't get here till 6:30.
I won't be here on the night, so.
I won't be here on the night through the 16th.
Okay, so it seems like the night.
I always say the night. I think, oh yeah, the night.
I'm not here on the night, on the 19th or the 23rd, I'm sorry. But you've, I gave you those dates and.
You're here on the 9th, right?
I'm here on the 9th.
And you're here on the 9th, Susan?
I'm here on the 9th.
Okay.
We have two absences on the 9th, I'm hearing, right?
Yes, but there's three, so I don't know if we want to. I hate to.
I think we need to, at least for.
That's, I agree. If, if you're all comfortable with a four person, I am too. But if we get down to three, I, I'm just afraid we're going to be going back on too many things. So I'm hearing that we have two Commissioners absent on the 9th and the 16th or the 23rd. I'm sorry.
The 16th works for me.
I'm here the 16th.
Commissioner Smith, are you about the 9th or the 9th?
Are you going to be at the 9th and the 16th?
Oh, the 9th and the 16th, okay. So those two, we have two out.
He may also count the 16th?
How much of the 9th issues can move to the 5th?
The majority.
Okay, then it doesn't make the 9th a real problem?
So the 9th doesn't work, we don't have two folks here.
Okay, we're, we're, yeah, we're getting rid of the 9th.
16th.
16th works.
23rd, one or two gone.
I, I won't be able to make it, but depending on what we cover, I'm okay with it. I told you about the ones that I really wanted to be here, so.
Can we start the 23rd at 6:30?
Yes.
Can we start the 16th at 6:30?
Sure.
Man, you're way too easy, Rich.
Commissioner Welch, can you confirm, are you available on the 16th?
I am available this, I'm, I'm available the rest of nights, the 9th is only one I.
Okay.
So we've got the 16th and 23rd.
Yep.
That's three of them in May.
That's the 5th.
But we're doing the 5th, the 16th. Did we say we're not doing the 19th?
Yeah, we, oh, you're going to do, I think I'm the only one who can't make the 19th.
Anybody else not here on the 19th? So we're good on the 19th?
I can do the 19th.
So we're 5, 16, 19, and 23?
But do we need to do the 19th if we move most of what's scheduled for the 9th to the 5th? On our original schedule, we didn't need that many dates.
I think we'll still be meeting in June under probably either scenario. I'm happy with three meetings in the month, but we're here to accommodate. So if we want to do four, we'll, we'll do that as well.
So what three do you want to do, the 5th, the 16th, and 23rd or?
I think that works.
5th, 19th, and, I mean.
5th, 16th, 23rd, is that okay with you?
It works with me.
That sounds great.
Are we gonna?
Well, I'm the only one on the 23rd, right? Can't make it.
Right.
Okay, good.
And you're gone the 19th.
No, I'm here the 9th.
Who's gone the 19th?
I'm on the 19th.
So we could do the 19th in this. I just want to make sure we get to our deadline.
Yeah, so what works for staff better? Which of the three dates do you want? We're meeting the 5th, we've got the 16th, 23rd, or 19th available. Which two out of those three do you want? What works best for you?
The 16th and either 19 or 23.
Yeah.
For all of them.
Do you want to do two in one week?
Two in one week or? Two in one week is hard.
Well, that's what you're.
Two in one week would be preferred. Because we can deliver the packet on a Friday and.
So you want to do the 16th and 19th is what you're saying?
I think I see some grimaces though, so I mean, we're flexible too.
I'm okay, I'm okay with it. I, is there any, are you not okay with it?
Whatever.
I just want to get to the, make sure we get to this deadline, get this thing across the line here.
Yeah, I don't think we can pull in the, the June date into May, can we?
You know, it's a little difficult to say. I mean, we'll see what kind of pace we work out with the rest of it. I think we've, you know, made up some ground. There are a couple of issues we're going to bring back, the parking. Coastal stuff is still out there, so there's still some work to do.
So let's go for the 16th, 19th and, you know, if something major comes up, we could do the 23rd if we needed to.
And maybe to save some time, we, we, do we really need the Coastal Commission to come right now? I mean, it's kind of, you know, maybe we need to use this time to do this and get them, you know, toward the end. It's not going to change probably what we do and.
We weren't going to have them at a special meeting anyway, right? I mean, they were coming.
Probably at a special meeting.
Okay.
I, I think we want to, I think we want to hear from them. I think it's important that they hear from us.
I don't feel strongly about it.
I think they need to know that we support the staff. That they're not just crazy out there making up.
Well, that's another issue.
So where are we at? I just want to make sure we're clarified. So we, we meet the 5th, the 9th is out, the 16th, the 19th, and the 23rd? Are we, are we questioning the 23rd?
The 23rd is just sort of iffy. It's there if we need it, but not necessarily.
Yeah, we'll just have to make that decision on the 9th if we want to, or no, we're not.
We're not going to meet on the 9th, the 16th.
On the 5th.
Yeah, on the 5th if we want to do it, we have to make that decision so you can notice it.
Okay.
But right now, on the calendar, we've got the 5th, the 16th, and the 19th.
Yeah.
And then June 13th and June 27th.
June 13th and June 27th.
So if we were going to have the Coastal Commission come and.
We would like everybody here, we want.
Yeah, we'd want to do it at the June meeting so that you'd be here for it.
Yeah, and I won't be here for 27th, but I'll be here for.
Could we see if they could come the 13th of June?
Sure, you know, my, my hope is that we can have another meeting with them before they come to the Commission. I don't know what their schedules are, but we can ask.
Okay. We'd just like for all of us to be here for it.
So with that, I guess we'll ask for a directive report. Commissioner comments? You want to talk about your meeting last night?
No.
It was a good job.
It was great, it was great. It was well received. I think it was, there was somewhere close between 175 and 200 people there. Really, really good, going over all the exit poll data. We've been still getting a lot of response, a lot of surveys today in the, in the email and.
People can still email?
People can still email if anybody is still awake after this discussion tonight.
And where's the email?
Go on www.visioncapitola.com, participate page, the comment form. Until Friday morning, they can do that. And the exit poll was very interesting. The aquarium on the wharf got some real traction there.
Interesting, good.
Yeah, the Art and Cultural Commission's been looking at that and looking at how we can find a way to partner with somebody to bring that back, so.
And it was really just a tank, I mean, right? That's what we were talking about.
It was just a tank about the size of.
Yeah, but it was great. It was great.
So with that, I guess we'll ask for a motion to continue this until May 5th. A special meeting on May 5th at 6:00 PM.
I'll make that motion.
6:00 PM on May 5th. Second, are those in favor? It passes, thank you. Somebody did.